This is the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board meeting. If I could have a roll call.
John Eichman.
Teresa Golden.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
And if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on June 7th and one on June 21st. And Pam, I'm gonna hold over the approval of the April 5 minutes. We don't have a quorum tonight to be able to approve them. And before we go ahead and jump into the items on our agenda, I just wanted to welcome our new alternate member, John Eichman. Thank you very much for joining us. We're happy to have you here and we're trial by fire.
That's it, welcome. Thank you.
All right, the first item on our agenda is minor modification for the Duchess Animal Clinic on Lake Walton Holdings on Vanwick Lane and Lake Walton Road.
Good evening. Mark Day representing this project.
Great.
This is a...
Do you know where this is?
I've seen it. We're actually purchasing the building. We need a couple thousand square feet additional. We have been approached by Duchess Animal Clinic. They would like to take the balance. So we're here tonight to discuss it with the board.
Okay. Do we have a drawing or something like that?
I have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So Mark, right now, you're... The whole building is professional offices, right?
Correct.
Okay. And moving to the animal clinic, Michelle, I think we took a look at the parking calculations just to see if there'd be any difference between veterinary...
Right.
...animal hospital versus office use.
Right, so currently, the code does not have a specific parking requirement for veterinary clinics. So what I did was I went to the Duchess Animal Hospital to see, because they had provided a number for us when they came in. And it basically amounted to one space for every 173 square feet, which is probably pretty conservative. So I just went ahead and utilized that ratio since it's what we're using in other locations. And essentially, it came out to needing... The total requirement for parking was 26 spaces and they have 27 spaces onsite between the two uses on the site, the office use and the animal hospital. So they have one extra space. And of those 27 spaces, I think they've only got one handicap right now, but they're proposing to stripe another one handicap to meet the requirement, so they would show an additional handicap space.
So what you're showing us here, I see too, so this is a proposal for a restripped, no difference to the paving area or anything, you're just restriping?
No, we're just gonna... We actually have the striped area. We'll just classify the other spaces ADA.
Okay. So as you... I mean, it's just unusual not to have them right next to the building. Is that because that's where the curb dips?
Yeah, what happens is in order to make grade, you have to be able to... That's where they can drop and still make grade up into the building.
Okay, okay. So normally, we would have it next to the building. In this case, because the curb cut needs to be leveled out for accessibility.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Michelle, were there any other things that we recommended for this?
No, I mean, this is an existing business that's currently in a shopping plaza in town and it's just moving, so it would operate in a similar fashion.
Okay.
And similar business hours to probably what's in this building right now as far as office hours, maybe some weekends, that sort of thing?
Yeah, as far as I know, I don't... She doesn't typically work weekends.
Okay. Is this... Any kenneling or anything like that?
Any what, I'm sorry?
Any kenneling of animals?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
If it is, it's for something that probably had surgery and is overnight.
Okay.
But she doesn't board.
Okay, okay. All right. Any questions or comments from board members? Anything else that we need to go over? Scott, anything from your end? All right, so Michelle, this is... Is this the change of use or are we also approving the minor site modification for the restriping at the same time?
Yes, and it is. It's a change of use and I basically looked at it and I didn't think it was a... Resulted in a major site plan impact, so I was recommending that it just be considered a minor site plan amendment.
Okay, so minor restriping. And you said it requires 26 and provides 27?
Correct. Between the two uses, it's 26 spaces required.
Okay. And the 27 is including the space that you're lost... That's lost for the second ADA?
Nope, they still have 27. And so there's 27 total spaces. Of those 27, two are handicapped.
Okay, all right.
I just... Just one question. In the event that the office should vacate and the animal hospital wants to expand, do they have to come back in that scenario?
Typically, yes.
Because it would be a change of use, yes. They would... So they'd have the same sort of process. They'd come back, they'd have to submit a letter.
So that should just be clear in the record then?
Right, because we... I wouldn't... At least, I wouldn't consider an animal clinic the same as office use typically.
I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay, okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve a change of use for 1900... Is that the 1900 square feet of use within the existing building between Lake Walton Road and Vanwick Lane for an animal hospital? And also, a minor site plan modification to restripe the existing parking lot to allow for 27 spaces, including two ADA spaces?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? And John, this is the first time we're looking at this, so are you comfortable... If you're comfortable voting, we're...
Absolutely.
Great, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Grippo Pascicello Lot Line realignment on Mockingbird Court. And I apologize if I mispronounced the name.
Hi, good evening. I'm Gina Grippo from 25 Mockingbird Court.
All right, and we have, I think, Michelle, again, I'm gonna look at... We have just a small land swap here. Any easements or anything we need to consider?
No, it's just a lot line realignment. It actually makes a lot of sense. The way the house is... Mrs. Grippo's house is currently aligned. It sort of has a piece of the other property in front of it. And her neighbor is getting ready to sell the property and so she approached him about perhaps selling her just a tiny piece of land so that they could actually control the... Basically, what's essentially their front yard. And so it's just a minor lot line realignment.
Okay, I know the highway department was making sure there was adequate snow storage and I think we have an email on... In our files saying that there was no need for additional snow storage at this time. Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, anything else? Any other comments from our professionals?
The only thing I would mention is that with the adjustment of the lot line, the proposed lot line does get fairly close to the well for lot 12. So as we mentioned in the letter, if it's within 10 feet, we would probably need to see a permission to file letter from the health department.
Okay, could we tell from the map if it's less than 10 feet?
It's very close. It seems to scale right at 10 feet, but that's the minimum. It might be worth having the health department take a look at it.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir.
This is my husband.
You'd have to just come on up to the mic. We can't hear you in...
It's about 15 or 16 feet from that line.
Well, I don't have a scale with me. But based on the proposed drawing, it looks like it's right at 10 feet.
I walk it. I stood on the line. I mean, you can send somebody out if you want.
Move it out, yeah.
But the line is staked right now?
The line is staked.
Not the new one?
Yeah, no.
Well, it's the new one that we're concerned about.
It goes to the end of the sewer, which is on the map. So if you go by the end of the sewer and the stake that's already pinned on the line...
Okay, I don't see the sewer on the line, but...
If you know where it is on the map, you're welcome to approach and show them. That's fine.
That looks like a catch basin right there.
It goes from the corner here.
The corner of the catch basin.
Well, that's it. It's across right in here. So there's a pin right here and then this is not pinned right here. It goes straight up to the corner of that basin.
So this pin is not... Has not been looking?
But it doesn't really line up with the corner of the basin though. You know, it's off. Going to that.
What are you seeing, Scott?
Well, I mean, we can measure it if you want. Send somebody out.
Yeah, but you'd have to have a hard point established on that line.
You want me to have him sink a pin?
You'd have to. That'd be the only way to know for sure, yeah.
I don't think it even necessarily requires a pin.
Well, if I gotta have him sink a pin, how far do I have to be from here? And I mean, it's stupid for him to come out and bang one here if it's gotta be here. I might as well just have him put it where it's gotta be.
Exactly.
You tell me the distance?
I would say 11 feet to be safe.
It's gotta be at least 11 feet.
11 feet from the well, yeah.
10 feet's the minimum, so if you make it 11...
Unless you want to go through the health department, which...
No, I only want the guy to come out once and don't have to come out, bang a pin, know it's 10 feet, know it's nine feet.
So would you... If you put the pin in the ground, we would just have to make sure that... Where you want it, we just have to make sure the line on the map corresponds to where the pin goes.
Of course, yeah, no, he'll change that.
So Scott, would you want us to look at that again before we approve it or approve it subject to bringing a revised map?
Yeah, subject to. Because I think it's an easy revision. Just approve it subject to.
And you're comfortable with the 11 feet from the well just to give you an extra... But, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Andy. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the Grippo Pascicello Lot Line realignment, subject to the minor adjustment on the map to ensure that there's at least 11 feet between the well and the lot line? And you'll resubmit the map to us once you have that done? Do I have a motion to approve that lot line realignment?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is again a minor modification for the Dogwood Knolls Golf Course, amended site plan on Route 376.
With us tonight is Mr. Jim Biorde. He's the owner of Dogwood Knolls Golf Course. Everybody, I assume, is somewhat familiar with the location. 376 Nine-Hole Golf Course, located probably in the northeast section of town. This is... We're before the board tonight for a minor modification. The intent of the owner is to install effectively an outdoor pavilion, okay? In an area which really serves as an outdoor patio use. This time of the year is spring and summer and even into the fall occurs. He has outings, okay? People come out, large groups come out, they play golf, and then what happens is they congregate outside. So it's really just an area to be able to shade themselves from the sun and so forth. So quite frankly, it's as simple as that. It is not anticipated for a large generation of additional traffic and use and so forth. Typically, in the summer days too, when the outings get finalized or they're over, thunderstorms bump in and so forth. They've had some issues. Not to say that they don't have indoor space now relative to existing facilities, but it's nice to have somewhere to kind of congregate and not have to all run inside and outside. So that's effectively the essence of our application.
Okay. What's there right now? Is it just grass or is there a...
There's an outdoor patio.
Cement or some brick, something like that?
Stone, hard surface, asphalt.
Okay, okay. So Mike, it looks like... And I'm sorry, I'm just looking at your drawings. It looks like it's open air?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, open on all sides and again...
Does it have a kick wall or anything or just columns into the ground?
Columns. There is a small, I think it was mentioned in the review letter, there is a small, basically a sitting wall, a couple of stones, two feet high, to sit and so forth, and a fire pit, okay, which is not uncommon. The FAB asked if we could actually make sure that there is a fire extinguisher, so we'll get that notation on the plan for assurance.
Okay. And what's the roofing material? Is it?
Asphalt.
So it's gonna be... The fire pit's gonna be underneath the pavilion?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it'll just be outside.
Okay, right.
Yeah, but, you know.
I was gonna say, I'm surprised the fire advisory board didn't have other comments.
To clarify, no, it's not under the pavilion, just off to the edge.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
Okay. I don't think it's gonna change our trip traffic or anything. To Mike's point, he said it's being used for the existing...
I think it's existing use right now.
Okay.
I have been to the golf course.
Okay. Scott, anything from you?
No.
Andy?
No.
Okay, Michelle? I think this probably needs to be reviewed by the ARB since it is gonna have a roof, roofing material, color of tile and things like that. If we approve you subject to review by the ARB, are you comfortable with that?
My understanding is that we, again, that we wouldn't have to. It becomes the issue of timing. And it's certainly not an issue relative to this board, but, you know, we... A building permit was actually submitted and was found out after the fact that you would have to actually come here for a modification, which is fine, so that's why we're here. We are sitting now in mid-May. I think the first available meeting we would have to hit would be June, right? Okay. If it's something the board would allow us to proceed subject to, then we can certainly make... I don't see any particular issues with the ARB. It's actually behind the existing building, so in terms of view shed from 376, you won't even see this. But procedurally, if in fact you'd like us to go before them, then we can make that run.
Michelle, I think for most things like this on a business site, we would typically want the ARB approval.
Well, typically, it's a little tricky because it's a residential zone and technically, in the code, ARB does not review projects in residential zones. However, it's a commercial use in a residential zone. So we're in a bit of... It's a little bit of a catch 22. But, I mean, if we could... I mean, I guess it's up to you on whether or not you want to refer it and approve it subject to ultimately their final approval or if you want to just...
That's what I was thinking, subject to and we'll just handle it in the building department.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, yeah. I wouldn't have it come back here.
You know, I think... Because the building permit was actually submitted, so this is the last kind of item before this gets wrapped up and goes down to the building department. Again, it's a pavilion, so the only, I think, item we're really talking about is the shingles.
Surfaceing and the shingles, right.
Right, because it's all open. So it's the shingles and maybe the type and the color.
Possibly wrapping the posts. I don't know. I'm assuming they're wood, but if they're not wood, if it's...
Yeah, they're just large, you know. So, you know, I don't see it going in that direction, so it's a fairly minor request. There's... The point is, is would there be the possibility to allow us to proceed with the building department at the applicant's own risk?
If...
In terms of allowing footings to be installed? Again, the building has been... So I don't... We're not gonna get that far ahead in two weeks.
Right.
Just allow them to keep moving and understood that it's our own risk. We make a run before they... We're not... The shingles are the last thing to go on.
Right.
Right? At least that way.
The plan was to have the shingles, the clubhouse shingles.
Right, and that would make sense.
I'm not suggesting there'd be any issue with that plan. It's just normally we would have the ARB review the drawings.
Right. That way, it kind of kept them rolling, because, you know, unfortunately, we're two weeks and then it's another week and then it's a month and now we're...
I don't think you'd need to come back here. I think we would be approving you subject to ARB. And if Scott's willing to coordinate that through the building department, I'm comfortable with whatever the building department's comfortable with.
That would be great.
If other board members as well.
I agree.
Yep.
That's reasonable.
All right, Mike?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Can you just... I'm sorry, one more thing. Can you just show me where the existing building is and where the pavilion's gonna sit?
This is a 157 acre site.
Okay.
Plus or minus. So it's a big scale, but it's... And it's a little tough to read, but here is the existing building.
Okay.
The pavilion is directly behind it. If you...
So to the east of the existing building?
I would say directly east, yeah.
Directly east, okay. Okay.
I just... I have one question. Is there any intent like to have weddings or things like that or is that strictly just for the golfers?
It would just be for summer use, just that, you know. Well, I guess the question is, is it strictly for outings or are there other events? It would probably be just for outings.
I mean, it sounds to me like there may be a rare occasion, but...
Well, I don't know if there's like weddings and events like that, whether it part...
We've never had one.
Okay.
No weddings.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve the construction of the pavilion subject to ARB approval to the east of the existing building based on the specifications provided tonight by the applicant?
So moved.
Second.
And do I... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Sorry, I was gonna ask for a second. You already gave me a second. Thank you, Mike. You're all set. Okay, the next item on our agenda, Michelle, can I just ask you to walk us through the rezone request?
Yeah, sure. The planning board is in receipt of a rezone referral from the town board. And we received it, I think, last week. And what I'm going to do is write a memo on some of my recommendations. I'm gonna probably tackle that tomorrow, take a look at the area and write up a memo to the planning board and circulate it to all of you to look at with my recommendations or my thoughts. And then have you guys give your comments back and then we can send them on to the town board.
Can you give us just a quick overview of what it is right now?
Sure. It's over in...
This is 27 Orchard Place?
Correct. So it's near Exotic Cars, probably the best landmark over there, and the Funeral Home and that area of 376, over in that section. There is a current home that's getting converted to office space.
Okay.
Or wants to convert to office space, I should say. And so the rezone request is to allow that to become basically a business district.
To be included in the B1 or B2 zone?
Correct. And then what we would do probably at the same time is clean up some of the existing, pre-existing non-conforming issues that are out there, like I think currently Exotic Car is zoned residential.
Yeah, I see that.
So we would probably make recommendations to clean up some of the other issues that are out there.
So the existing business uses fall under a business zone, okay.
Correct. And it's possible that we may look at... I'm... I have to look at the maps tomorrow, but I'm thinking potentially allowing, in certain circumstances, ground floor commercial and second story residential.
Okay. Okay, great. So you'll provide that to us and we're asked for comments back? Is there a date when we need to provide our comments back or we've got a little while to do that?
I think they would like them pretty expeditiously, but what I'll do is I'll try to circulate something.
We can put this on our June 7th agenda. You'll make sure we get something ahead of time to review.
Correct.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments from board members? And we have some... In our package tonight, we have the description and then Michelle will give us some of her suggestions that we'll take a look at. Thanks, Michelle.
No problem.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Stewart-Scott, six lots, both lead agency declaration and the adjourned public hearing.
Good evening.
Do you have this to put up on the board since we're still in public hearing? Put up on... Sorry, put up on screen?
She's got it.
Great, okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Pam, did we receive... We had enough time for the lead agency. Did we receive any comments that would prevent us from declaring lead agency? Okay. So do I have a motion to declare the planning board as lead agency for the Stewart-Scott subdivision on Warren Farm Road?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll get started with the discussion in just a second. I want to just make sure it's up on the board since we're in public hearing. And do you also have the other maps there? If you don't... I apologize, I don't know who...
Jensen.
Jensen, thank you, sorry. You have the other layouts as well. I think we'd like to just talk through what the other layouts look like, if that's all right. And Ernie, if you want to start with that. I know last time we met, we asked that you present us with a couple different layouts, which you've now done. So if you want to walk us through your preferred layout and then the alternatives you've come through, that would be great.
This is the layout that you've seen before. Six lots.
Okay.
And just to very just briefly recap, we have four Army Corps regulated wetlands.
Right.
We're looking to keep this wetland intact. We're looking to keep this wetland intact. This one down here, we would modify, would actually become larger because we're gonna eliminate this wetland.
Do we have something where we can have you just point up so that members of the public can also see this? Because we're in public here, I just want to make sure everybody understands. Thank you. So if you...
Is this sheet three?
Yep.
Okay, as I said, we have six lots. We have four wetlands. We have this one. Yeah. There's one in here. Yeah. There's one down here and then a very small one over here. And it's the intent of this plan is that this wetland would stay in place.[1596.22] of this plan is that this wetland would stay in, in place. This one would be eliminated, and that respective area would move down here. This wetland would remain in place, and this little finger of this wetland would be moved over here to maintain our separation. So that, that's the layout you have currently.
Yeah, that mic actually doesn't pick up for the room, so if you, if you don't, if you want to move to the podium with your pen, then we'll be able to hear you a little bit easier.
So.
Has there been any change to this layout since the last time we saw it? I think you were gonna look at moving one of the driveways to see.
Yes. Now, one of the, one of the layouts you had, and I don't know if you can pull that up, Jensen. But the driveway that was over here before used to be closer to this wetland.
Okay.
The town has a 50-foot separation.
Right.
So what we did is we took that, and we moved that wetland over. Excuse me, we moved that driveway over.
Okay.
So we now maintain the 50 feet.
Okay.
Other than that, the remainder of the layout remains the same.
Okay.
Then our next.
Which, in the six lots, because I know one of the things that we received for public comment last time was concern about driveways not coming out onto Burt's Path. So which of the lots in this six lot don't have driveways on Burt's Path?
Just the one right here.
Just that one? Okay.
And there's really, when, when this subdivision was originally conceived, the original 23 lots, I think there's another four or five lots that go down there.
Okay.
So.
With driveways on more, I think, is it Warren Farms?
Warren Farms, yes.
Warren Farms, yeah. Okay.
Now, the, the other layout, our next layout? Okay. This is the four lots. So essentially, we'd be keeping this wetland in place, this wetland in place, this wetland in place. This one over here would be modified slightly. Again, this little finger, as I mentioned before, to maintain separation to this septic, would be added over here. And that would be four lots.
Okay. Was there any way with this four-lot layout to, to not have to make that change on the, on the lower wetland?
No.
That there was no space to kind of shift stuff around?
Still keep four?
And stay out of the buffer? No? Okay.
I just have a question, too. Is this, does this one show the driveway, not in the, yeah, is that, is that the new configuration of the drive, or the old configuration?
It's probably, just look, I'm gonna say it's the old one, but again, it was more for discussion.
Okay, but you could make that, you couldn't move that over. Okay.
Oh, you're talking at the top of the plane? Right. I would assume we'd make this, yeah. Got it. Okay. So in this one, there's a small change to the wetland, just one of the wetlands. You'd make a change to the lot up there to move the driveway like you did on the six-lot layout, and there would be no other disturbance to the, to the existing wetlands?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then you had, I think, a three lot?
Okay, this is a, a three lot. You would have one, one lot right here, one lot right here, and one lot up there. And that, in effect, would maintain and preserve this wetland, this wetland, this one, and this one.
Okay. This is currently one lot or two lots, the existing property?
Two lots.
Two lots. So this, does this actually move one of those lines as well? Okay, just splits one of the two in half?
Two approved lots, basically separated by the road.
Okay.
Burt's Path.
Okay. And you couldn't find a four-lot layout that wouldn't require that additional wetland?
No.
Okay. Okay. So all three of the layouts, only one lot doesn't have a driveway on Burt's Path. In the three-lot layout, we're not disrupting wetlands. Again, assuming in the top corner, you'd be making the same adjustment to the drives regardless of the plan. They'd all have the same.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, you know, again, for the record, going back to the six lot, as we speak right now, we have a, a valid and current Army Corps permit.
I understand that. My, my concern is that that permit is requiring you to maintain this for five years, which means there's a burden on the town, and there's a burden on eventual homeowner to, to be able to support that and sustain it. And I just, it's not something this, that we've done before, so it's something that, you know, I think is a, is a very different, and Scott, I'm not sure what the right term is, but I'm not even sure that the planning board would be able to take that on for the town. I think it would have to probably go to the town board to review.
I believe so. I think that was the discussion, yes.
Yeah. I know Tom wasn't able to be here tonight, but he, he advised that it would likely need to be a town board action to actually accept any ongoing monitoring at the site. So I have concern that the plan, as it's currently presented with your Army Corps permitting, the town may not be able to support. So.
But regardless of what permit you're gonna, what permit you're gonna get, unless you do nothing, any, any Army Corps permit requires maintenance. It does. So unless you're gonna do nothing, no action, then you don't need a permit.
So your three-lot layout would be that scenario, right? Okay. In the four-lot layout, where it's a small move, is that still?
They will, they will require mitigation for any disturbance, so they'll still have to provide some.
Do you think it would still have the five-year tag to it?
Probably.
Okay.
You, I'm assuming you have not approached Army Corps about the change in plans at all at this point?
Yeah. Michelle, in terms of procedure, and again, I apologize, our, our town attorney wasn't able to be here, but I'm, I'm not sure we can move forward with the six-lot plan without knowing whether or not the town board is willing to take on the maintenance agreement and whatever that's gonna entail. So we have a three-lot layout that doesn't require that. Your four and your six-lot layouts do require, it sounds like, definitely the six-lot, probably the four-lot would require some sort of maintenance agreement bonding and town management of that five-year plan.
But why do you feel, or why does this board feel that it's incumbent upon the town to maintain that, or to monitor that?
Why wouldn't it be? I don't under.
I mean, you have, you have a permit. You, you, you complete the work. You certify that the work is complete. You know, if there's, if there's yearly inspections, I mean, if need be, I mean, a private consultant can do that. Why, why do you feel it's incumbent upon that the town or town government has to do that?
How would the town know that the developer won't walk away after the property is sold?
Well.
I'm not saying that would happen. I'm just saying, how, how would we know that? I mean, without having bonding, without understanding all of that.
Well, we don't know that. But I mean, you know, a wetland is a wetland is a wetland. And the chances are, wetlands are not stationary. Wetlands, they tend to move and creep, and they can move left or they can move right, you know? I mean, I, I don't understand why you feel, or the town feels incumbent upon town government to get involved in this. I'm sure they have enough things they have to deal with on a daily basis.
Would a homeowner?
Maybe.
You think a homeowner would be willing to do that?
You get the right homeowner, they'd love it, quite frankly. Yes. You get the wrong one, then you're right.
Michelle, I don't have enough experience with permitting like this, because the town doesn't normally entertain things that would cause, that would necessitate it without having a homeowners association or something like that. So I'm.
Correct. And my, my experience has been, when there's been a mitigation plan, it's typically been the homeowners association that will maintain the wetland, or maintain, make sure that the folks are out there doing monitoring regularly, to make sure that the plants are staying alive, and that the wetland is progressing, or the mitigation is progressing as it's supposed to. I've not, I've never seen it been done with a single lot owner before, in my experience. It may have been done, but I've ne, I've not experienced it.
What is the, let's assume a worst-case scenario. The developer builds a house. Does the initial mitigation walks away, plants die, or whatever, the mitigation plan isn't being followed correctly, and we're a year and a half, two years in. What's, what's the burden on the town if the Army Corps comes in and says the plan needs to be followed?
Well, I mean, I guess, I'm assuming that the permit is going to be issued to, to applicant.
Applicant owner.
And so, you know, once that applicant no longer owns the property, I'm not sure how that works with, with Army Corps. I'm not sure what the, who ends up holding the permit, if anybody.
Okay.
I, I think there'd have to be a performance bond in place for the period of, whether it's the full five years or not, you know, we could debate that.
I think it has to be, whatever the, whatever the permit requires, I think it has to be.
Well, it could be one of two ways. Performance for the five years, or performance for a period of time, and then switch over to a maintenance bond. But, you know, typically maintenance bonds are only 20%. So we'd have to have 100% maintenance bond. And I guess at that point, you're right back to the performance bond, because.
Right.
Unlike pavement, that probably won't completely fail. If everything dies, you could have to redo it again. So, but there'd at least have to be a bond in place.
Okay.
And I think, you know, if that, if that's the way that would put the town at ease, and if that's what has to be done, I mean, that's what, we'll have to do that. I mean, I, I see, once the work is completed, I would think there'd have to be some certification by a certified biologist. And then maybe after that, maybe the first two years, it's every six months, and maybe after that, it's every year to go out and do an annual inspection.
Yeah.
And all those fees would have to be collected upfront.
Do we know how to estimate that? I'm just, I mean, I don't know how we would estimate.
Have to get an estimate from somebody. You'd probably have to get an estimate.
Okay. Do you have us, did, did, does your professional submit an estimate to us? And I apologize if it's in the file. I don't remember seeing one.
I can do that, sure.
Just for the purpose of establishing bonding amounts, that sort of thing?
I'd be glad to ask him.
Okay.
It's Mike Nowicki. I'm sure you've heard of his name before.
Sure. Okay. Okay. I think Mike was a gentleman we met on site when we walked this property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, my personal opinion, I like the three or the four-lot layout better. I just think it's less in, less invasive. It seems like it's a lot less to do. My other concern with your six-lot layout is you're still, even, I think, with the, with the move of the driveway, and Andy, I don't know if Joe gave you this or not, but I, I think when I asked Joe the question, he said, "We're still very close to the five acres of disturbance as far as, you know, requiring additional permitting regarding disturbance."
Yes, that's correct. You were gonna go back and check some of these dimensional things, like access to the well, because I know we had, like, areas that were only six foot wide, and truck is eight foot wide. Did you go back and revisit those numbers? We didn't, but we can, certainly. Because we asked that last time, because you're already right at the cusp of five acres.
Yeah, it was something like 5.95 or 5.97, something like that.
That's with, I think, some unrealistic.
Or, sorry, 4.95, 4.95.
Unrealistic dimensions on the plan, so.
Right. But what I'm saying is, if we need an additional permit, if it is gonna move forward, if, and I don't, I don't know that the maintenance bonding and all of that is, I, I think we just want Tom to be able to weigh in and tell us whether, whether that's something the planning board decides, or whether it has to be referred to the town board. But assuming that moves forward, we still need to determine whether or not you also need a permit for the disturbance. And to Scott's point, I think we just need to make sure that all of the areas of disturbance are correctly delineated, so we can document that. And I think you did bring it down a little bit as the driveway was moved, so I don't, I know you're right, kind of right at the edge of that. If there's a couple dimensions that have to change, it may change your calculation. If it goes over, we want to make sure we're including that before we.
I think we were even kicking it around in the office, that there may be some things we could do there to actually improve it. So we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay.
No problem.
All right.
But I just want to make it clear, you know, and I think the board knows, you know, from, from almost day one, I kind of resisted doing layouts, because I didn't want to get into a situation where I give you two layouts, or three, or six layouts, and you say, "Okay, pick one." We're, we're still, and the owner is still committed for the six lots. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's important to him. I mean, at one time, there were more lots there, but that was a different time, you know? 25 years have gone by.
Well, and at one time, this property was mostly wetlands, and you wouldn't, you would've had the two lots. So I.
No, no, no.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, this was originally approved as two lots. I think we're looking at the three lot, the four lot, and the six lot. I understand the six lot is your preferred layout. I completely understand.
Just want to make that clear for the record.
I'm clear. I know. All right. Is there anything we need to go over with regard to traffic or, or the driveways? I'm assuming, do, have we checked site distances on the driveway on Warren Farms?
No, we have not, simply because the, the actual layout hasn't been established yet.
Okay. I think all three plants have the driveway on Warren Farms in the same location now, so I think we can probably verify that. I'm assuming the Burt's Path are gonna be fine, because that's a fairly, that's gonna be a low, low-speed, low-travel road, but we may just want to double-check those as well. Were there any other comments from Morris? Andy, anything else we needed to cover?
No, that was, no, no, that was it.
Okay. I think, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna, trying to remember what Joe mentioned. Was there something in the letter about the, the toe of the, the septic pads versus the distance to the wells? Are you aware of this, that the Health Department may need to evaluate that, or are you asking for something from the Health Department to allow?
Yes, I believe there was, they were gonna, Joe had spoken to the Health Department, and he was looking at possibly reviewing the, the plans early, prior to preliminary approval, to make sure that the Health Department and the, the town were on the same page in terms of layouts.
Okay. So are you, are you aware that, have you talked to the Health Department at all about the, the current layout?
Oh, they have had our plans probably about, about 15 months. And of course, they won't review it, because it exceeds four lots. It's a realty subdivision, so they won't review it until we have preliminary approval. But I did see Joe's memo.
Yeah.
That he had a discussion with them. I, I guess I can, I can go back and talk to Joe and/or the Health Department.
The concern, and again, understanding that the six-lot layout was your preferred layout, in that layout, normally the toe of the, at least my understanding from the discussion with Joe, the toe of the septic pad has to be at least the 100-foot distance from the well. And he didn't think that you made the 100-foot on all of the lots. So he was looking to have the Health Department weigh in a little bit early, in case, if they weren't gonna approve it, there, you know, you're already offering other layouts here, so if the Health Department was gonna, was gonna make an adjustment, we would want to understand that.
We had a meeting early, I mean, it was probably a year and a half, two years ago, and we told them what we're gonna do. These are all what's called super fill systems.
Right.
And they're quite aware of where the, where the system is relative to the toe.
Where the well is relative to the toe?
Where the, where the, the system itself, the laterals are, relative to the toe of the slope of the fill pad, relative to the well.
Okay. Okay. So I think, just so that everybody knows, Joe has asked the Health Department to review this ahead of time. Normally, they would wait till after we give our initial preliminary approval. He's asked for them to take a look at it ahead of time, and just let us know if they would've changed the lot layout, or would require moving the wells or the septics around before we settle on a final lot layout. Michelle, anything else from your end that we need to cover?
No.
Okay. Questions or comments from board member before, board members before we open for public comment?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against the Stewart-Scott subdivision, six lots on Warren Farms Road? Okay. All right. Last call? All right. Ernie, you can, you can say it, but it doesn't look like we have comment tonight. So I think what we want to do is, I'm sorry, bear with me, I'm just going through my notes. As far as the, I think we want to hear back from the Health Department. It sounds like Joe did not hear back from them yet. He sent them the initial question, but we haven't heard back yet.
No, actually, I, I just, I found it in, in the letter here.
Oh, great, okay.
He actually did speak with them, and they were.
I think they said they would look at it. I didn't think we had results back yet, or, or a response back.
I can't confirm that. I know he did actually speak to them, but I don't know, I don't know they were.
They haven't reviewed it, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I think we just need to have the, the confirmation of the wetland mitigation plan, to see whether that's something the town needs to own that. Again, I'm not an expert on the Army Corps permitting, so Michelle, I think if, if I can ask you to work with Tom.
I'll try.
Just get us an answer. It needs to be referred to the town board. Can we, from the discussion tonight, assume that the planning board is comfortable with making a referral to the town board, so we don't make you have to come back here and then do a formal referral?
And insofar.
And again, this is something I'm not sure of, but we just, not knowing what's gonna be required of the town with regard to the Army Corps, the mitigation, obtaining a performance bond, if that's something that the town board needs to accept versus the planning board, I just want to make sure that we understand whether or not that's something the town board will do.
Let me ask you, I mean, there's many projects in the town that have gotten Army Corps permits and require a mitigation plan. Have they all put up, have every one of those put up bonds?
I'm not aware of any that we're moving wetlands. Are you guys aware of any that we're moving wetlands that didn't have a homeowners association?
I'm not familiar with.
Do you, do you have an example?
No, I'm saying.
Honestly, I'm asking if you have an example, because we, we didn't, we're not aware of the town ever doing this before. So we're, that's why, that's why I'm not sure with the mitigation.
But I'm saying, I, I am not. But on other projects that the, the planning board has approved, where you have a situation like this, has the applicant?
We haven't had one where we're moving a wetland like this, that, to my knowledge, where there was something that needed to be.
Typically try to avoid all impacts to wetlands, so that we don't have any mitigation. I mean, that's, that's typically the way the board has, has reviewed applications.
In my tenure with the board, I've not, I couldn't recall any. We did have one situation where there was, I think, a golf course that did create a new wetland, but it wasn't a matter of a mitigation plan or anything like that. They had, they had done something specific to, I don't remember the exact.
I think they had encroached or, or something. So they had, they had agreed to, I, I don't remember exactly what they.
But in theory, it'd be the same, if you're creating a wetland. Okay, there's a mitigation plan.
So the, the difference is, though, that was, that was a, I think they were restoring an existing. Business, as opposed to a personal residence. So if we're gonna have an individual residence that owns this wetland, because theoretically, it's gonna be in one of the lots, we're, we're just, this is not something we typically contemplate as the board, so we just need to make sure we have our ducks in a row. I'm sorry, Scott, if.
That did not come to us for approval ahead of time. That was something that they went ahead and did on their own.
And also, I think.
But we did ask them to then come back in. They had to adjust their site plan because of it.
We never granted approval.
And I think the mitigation was just to remove fill. I don't think it was an actual replanting. I think they were just, they were just removing something that had.
This is actually changing the whole size of this wetland. It's, and I'm sure it's intended to make the wetland a better wetland. I, I think it was gonna remove some invasive species and things like that. So I'm not saying it's a bad plan. I just don't know how the town would administer that plan. We just need to make sure we understand that.
So what, is the planning board asking the town board, so I understand?
I'm asking Michelle to work with the town attorney to identify what the town's responsibility would be when there's a wetland mitigation plan that has ongoing maintenance in place, that would be the, a burden potentially on a sole homeowner within this subdivision, to understand what the town's responsibility would be, whether this is something the town board needs to approve and accept as far as performance bonds or maintenance bonds and things like that, and, or whether this is something within our, within the planning board's purview.
Okay.
It's just something new for us. We're, we're not sure about this. It's not something we typically do.
Okay.
And again, if there's other examples, if you have other examples, I'm, that I, we just can't remember, I'm, I'm more than happy if you have, if you want to share them with us. That would be terrific. Even if there's, even if you have some in other towns, I, I think we don't mind talking to other towns to see what they're doing with things like this.
I'll, I'll check with Mike to start with.
Okay. Okay. So Michelle, if I can ask you to do that, and then I think, does anybody have any other comments on the layouts that we're looking at right now?
I agree with you, like, three or four, either three lot or four lot over the six lot.
Okay. Okay. Let's wait and just have the answer back on what the requirements would be for the permitting. Ernie, if that's all right with you, we can adjourn you. We'll make sure we have that answer, and we'll talk with you ahead of time, so you, you know it as well. But I think we just need to understand what that's gonna look like, so that, so the board can settle in on a final lot layout.
Okay.
Was there any, other than what the comments that are already in the professionals' Was there any, other than what the comments that are already in the professionals' letters, is there anything else that we, we need from the applicant, or we need to be able to complete the application, come to a decision? Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we have, I'm sorry, let me grab my agendas.
June 7th to 21st.
We have June 7th and June 21st. Do you have a preference? Our June, just so you know, our June 7th meeting, no, actually, I think we've got space on either one.
June 7th.
June 7th, okay. Michelle, that gives you enough time to work with Tom and figure out what we would need next. Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn the Stewart Scott public hearing to June 7th?
So moved, second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for the Fecory two-lot subdivision on Kensington Drive and Dale Road. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing for Fecory?
So moved, second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Okay. So the last time we had this in front of us, we were waiting on the DEC to go back out to the property, and then we were gonna just double-check the wetland, wetland line delineation. What's our progress so far on that?
Okay, we, we met with the, last week, we met with the DEC. They, they walked the entire wetland line that was previously delineated. They found that all the flags that were there were in place, and in addition to that, so no flags were moved. I notice they confirmed the old line, plus they added three flags that we have to add to our map.
Okay, so where were the flags added?
Right up in this area here.
Okay.
There were two flags added here, and then there was one that was added right in here.
Okay. So...
The rest of this remain, remains as is.
Okay.
Plus, this area here, if you recall, on our early submission, I think we only showed a wetland up to this point, but now we've shown the wetland all the way down here, and then up along this drainage ditch here.
Okay. We expected that, that was, you knew you were doing, okay.
Yeah.
And that was for the, was it the well setback on, on the existing home? I can't remember the reason we were redelineating those.
Well, because we have an application for them for the, the construction, now, is what we're gonna do, the existing well here, the, this house is served by a well here.
Okay.
This well now will serve this house, the new well, which we've shown, it's not gonna be here, it's actually gonna be over here, but this well is gonna serve this house.
So that well's going to be within the buffer, or is that...
It's gonna be just within the buffer, right in here.
Okay.
But I must...
That looks like the wetland line, not the buffer, am I mis...
No, it's shown incorrectly, Laurie, I'm, I'm sorry to, sorry to say that. But what happened, we never erased it from where we had it before.
Okay.
But this, this well here will actually be over here. So getting back to our application, originally, we were proposing two new wells, and we were gonna abandon the existing well.
Okay.
After speaking with the Health Department, and I think upon recommendation of the town, they said, you know, let's keep the existing well for this house.
Okay.
And just drill a well over here, and they agreed with that concept.
Okay. So with the flags that were added on the other side of the property, did that move your setback at all, or is it all still the same?
It moved it in, it did make it a little tighter.
Okay. By how much? How many feet?
Probably moved it ten feet. Not continuously, but just in this area here.
So is that, is that gonna impact your septic layout and things like that?
No, it's not.
Okay.
I mean, right now, well, you know, it's, it's just, we'll just make it, but it's tight. And we might reconsider, you know, right now, we wanted to keep forty feet off the property line, we might make that a little narrower, just to kick everything over. I mean, I think we have to, we just have to look at that closer. We haven't got to that point yet, but, you know, right now, it, although tight, it seems to fit.
Okay. So Michelle, were you at, you were at the...
Yes.
Site, okay.
Yes.
So can you just give us, from your perspective, is there any recommendation we have right now?
Sure. When I was out there, the DEC informed me that they had added a couple of flags, as, as Ernie told you, in the locations that he pointed out. And I am in receipt of a plan, because I asked Ernie to CC me on any correspondence with the DEC, and so I think they submitted a plan to the DEC, which I was CC'd on. It's not been signed yet, because they have to review it. And I'm, I have it in front of me right now, and it's not a large-scale one, so I can't scale it off, otherwise I could give you the dimensions, but I'm afraid that, the scale is kind of funky on this right now, so I'm not, when I'm scaling it off, I'm not getting the right numbers right now, so I don't, I'm, I'd rather have the large-scale ones when I, to give you the real answers.
So Ernie, is that something you're gonna be submitting? You'll submit an updated plan?
Yes.
You're probably waiting for the signature, I'm assuming, right?
Okay.
So, but I, the reason he sent me this was because I asked him to please CC me on everything that was sent. But I would, based on this map, it looks like the adjacent area is going to come incredibly close to the, and if not, within the grading for the house, and also the septic area. So I think that the adjacent area is gonna, I mean, it's gonna be right on top of, of that line, so I don't know how they're going to grade for the home and not go into the adjacent area.
What, will that mean for the future homeowner, as far as being able to mow a lawn, or maintain the house, that sort of thing?
I mean, virtually, the...
I thought you can't mow in a buffer. Do they have to get a permit for that, or what's the...
Well, I guess we're gonna have to see if, I mean, first of all, we'll have to see if the DEC determines that, based on their, this map, if they would require some sort of adjacent area permit. I'm not, I'm not sure what they're gonna say about that, because it is so close to the line.
Okay.
But I don't know. I don't know what they'll end up doing. I'm not sure.
Do you agree that the, that the buffer line is coming up close to the toes of the disturbance?
Well, it's closer, but it does not impinge.
So how far from the edge of the house would the closest place to the buffer be?
That part is still the same.
Ten feet?
Right back in here. This part here, as far as closest to the house, has not changed, but where it's changing is right in here.
Okay.
And like I said, if we have to, we can slide the septic, you know, we could, if we can even slide the driveways, it'd be, we still have room, if we have to do that. But, you know, based on the initial scaling there, I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
So are you anticipating, because I think we described, we normally require a fence to delineate the buffer area, so a homeowner knows they can't go past the fence with any mowing and things like that.
Right.
You're anticipating the fence to follow that, and so basically, the homeowner knows they're gonna have sort of a wild land very close to their house.
Right. Yeah, that'll be on the map. I'm sure most, I know other applications I've done, we had to show that map in detail on the plan.
Okay. Because I, and Michelle and I just caught up very briefly, but I think part of this area is being mowed right now, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, this, the whole area, pretty much the whole area, almost...
So there'd actually be a restriction, though, placed in, in the deed, right, to prevent a homeowner from doing that in the future? Or they would have to have a permit that allows it?
All I can say is, when I walked out into what is probably like midway between where the septic area is and where the wetland line is, I was wa, in that area, it's extremely soggy, I guess is the best way. I mean, you...
Had it rained recently, or is it...
It's been raining, so yeah, certainly, but it's definitely, you know, sort of a depression, and this, and it was definitely very soggy soils.
Okay. Do you have a plan to request a permit to allow them to mow into the buffer, or are you intending to put the fence and say you can't mow past the fence? What's the plan?
We, we haven't talked about that, but...
Okay.
We would put up a fence, we wouldn't mow it, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's been mowed since we bought the property, and there was the culvert, the easement that's there now, wasn't really technically a wetland, but it services the back of the property as a wetland, so then they flagged it. But when we bought the property, that property's been mowed for years, but if we had to, we could put up a fence and stop mowing it, that's not a problem.
Okay. Okay.
And to Michelle's comment...
I'll be, I'll be very frank with you, this seems very tight. I mean, you can imagine if you owned a house, and you know you're not gonna be able to go more than ten, twenty feet off your house to be able to enjoy a yard, that's pretty tight.
Yeah, the front of the house is a...
It's an average front.
Within an average front, it's an average front yard. We could move the driveway over, and we could even change the contour of the house, where instead of the driveway going to the side of the house, it could go into the front of the house. So we have another, I think, twenty feet to work with, easy. So we could definitely move it over and make it work.
I would, I would look at a layout that maybe just provides a little bit more land for a homeowner to enjoy, if they want to put a deck, or if they want to do something like that, you're gonna have zero room to do that with the current layout, I would just look at that.
The back of the house, I already discussed with Ernie, and I think toward the, more toward the left of the layout, we have a good forty feet, and we're planning on putting a stone paver patio, and my, my parents don't need a big backyard anyway, so, they actually prefer not having a big backyard.
Okay.
So...
Okay. So look at your options, as far as, because at least you have, the wetland's delineated now, you can give us an updated map. Make sure you show the hundred-foot buffer all the way around, so we can understand clearly how far.
Yes.
And Ernie, it may just help us, and I think you may have had it on the plan already, but just, wherever it's tightest, just give us some, some footage, so we get a sense. Sometimes we get the scaled plans, it's hard for us to tell how much actual distance there is between the edge of the house, or edge of, say, the septic, and where the wetland buffer is, so it just helps us know that.
So we'll...
This is really tight, I mean, even, I understand what you're saying, it's really tight, so we're, we're gonna want to look at the, once the DEC signs the map and we look at your revised plan.
Okay.
But we'll have to, we'll have to look at it again, and just make sure that we think there's enough room for a homeowner to actually move around. And, and honestly, I think the other thing, I guess, Andy, I don't know if you look at this, or Scott, you do, I'm just making sure that we can stay out of the buffer during construction, because that's the other issue you could have.
Well, a requirement would be, they'd have to put up a fence, a protective fence, right out of the box, and that would ensure, but if they locate that...
But I mean, ten feet could be tight off, you know, during construction, ten feet is a very small distance, if you're moving construction.
Once they put the fence, they can't...
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have access on, we own other properties, so we would...
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, Michelle, the J Lane property, we're gonna take another look at that, to see if there's anything we can learn from that, so that we can make sure we don't repeat any issues.
Correct, yes.
So can still take a look at that one?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Any other questions or comments from professionals before we open for public comment? Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak for or against the Fecory two-lot subdivision? What I'll do is, I'll have you come on up, just like we did before, you can sign in on the clipboard up here on the corner of the table, and then you can come right to the podium. Thank you.
I may need a little help with projecting, I've got a powerful presentation.
Is this the presentation we saw at the last meeting, or is this something additional? Is this the presentation we saw at another meeting, or is this...
A few foils are here from the last meeting, but additions.
Okay.
I think we're gonna bring everybody to the same, same speed here.
Okay.
My name is Chet Drukowski, I live directly across from the property. Been there since 1979. Seen a lot of things happen in this neighborhood. This is from the last time I was here. Wait a minute, let's go back again. There we go. These are observations I've made. There is water that, in a normal year, that's at both ends of the property. It's so wet that you can't get a riding lawn tractor through, it frequently gets stuck in the mud, has to be towed out. One of my neighbors was a landscaper, and he finally gave up trying to cut the property, cut the grass. And the north end is where they want to put this septic system. I had a table here that I added another line to from the last presentation, just to show you that the precipitation hasn't changed very much. If you average this all out, it comes out to about thirty-six below normal.
Okay.
Now, what I did is, I went back day by day since the first of May, when that table ended. Couldn't give you a monthly summary, summary for things that haven't happened yet. But there was some rain this week, up until Saturday. We had a brief shower on Sunday morning. Didn't show up either the NOAA or the Weather Underground site, which is over in Wapinsh's Falls. I had no trouble cutting my grass that afternoon, I have a walk-behind lawnmower, not a big deal. I have two neighbors, one lives next door, and the other, he's right across from the property, and also is Mike Gentile. He cut his prop, cut his grass that afternoon on Monday with no problem. Tuesday, there was no rain, and the problem was that they couldn't complete cutting the grass on Monday, they had to come back at eight o'clock on Mon, on Wednesday morning. That was just before the two o'clock visit from the DEC. The timing is rather interesting. This is a picture that was taken back earlier this year in February.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, just pause for one second. Can I just clarify, is the grass typically cut here on, on this lawn?
Yeah.
They typically mow this, so it's not unusual that the grass is mowed?
No.
Okay.
What's unusual is what you see after it's been cut. This is a shot, looking down south from the north end of the property here. This was taken back in February 16th, three hours after we had a good rain the night before. You can see, this is the area where they were taking soil samples for the percolation tests, and this whole area in here was standing water, you can sort of see that, I think. Now, this was taken Monday, after they got finished cutting the grass. You can see a lot of damage to the grass in here, where the mower kept getting stuck and tearing it up, literally. And this is a section that they couldn't even cut, they just gave up and went away. I've got a few more pictures to show you. I came, this is five o'clock in the evening. The light's not all that great that time of day, I took a picture later on, actually the next day or two. But this, again, is the area they couldn't cut, all torn up because the tractor was sinking in. Again, another picture, more uncut grass, more damage to the, to the grass. This, again, was on Monday at five o'clock in the evening. Again, another picture, more uncut grass, more damage to the, to the grass. This again was on Monday at five o'clock in the evening. Taking it from across the street for a panoramic shot here. This is where your wetlands are, and this again is the area that they couldn't cut. More damage, more uncut grass, more pictures to show you what happens when you try to take a tractor through there. This will happen with any lawn tractor, I'm sure. And this was caused by the lawnmower, just literally sinking into the ground, and there wasn't all that much rain. Uh, Tuesday, eight o'clock in the morning, I was there, took some pictures. The reason I went out in the morning, the sun was coming in from the east and illuminating the area a little bit better. Again, you can see grass and tractor problems here. Uh, again, I was taking a bigger shot. I put a lot of pictures in here. You can take a look at this. I've got extra copies for the board member. It's a large file. These pictures run two megs or so. Next thing you know, when you're up to a 20-meg limit, you got a problem. So I leave a bunch more with Pam.
That's fine.
Uh, some pictures here. Wednesday, May 11th, this is 4:08 in the afternoon. Uh, the DEC was through and they were putting in little flags in different places. Just have some pictures to show you where they are.
Okay.
Another picture of another flag, and I'll tell you how these fit into the overall plan in a couple of minutes. Again, more pictures. Another flag. And even another one buried in here. You've got to look for some of these. They don't show up all that well, but they are really there. Another flag. Very close to the edge of the wetlands. And this is where they want to put the septic system or maybe over in here. And this is where they were having only trouble cutting the grass. Very wet. This is after the DEC was through. And I took that picture because it shows that that morning they came through, the landscaper came through to clean up the, the grass to cut it. So I guess it would look better for the DEC. So it was cut at eight o'clock in the morning by the landscaper, and the DEC visit came through at about two o'clock in the afternoon. Very interesting. Uh, again, Wednesday afternoon, a little after four. Again, everything was nice and cut, but again, you see the damage caused by the, the tractor wheels. More pictures. More of the same. So the conclusions, this isn't the last of the presentation yet. But this is what I had said before, that the area to be subdivided at the north end of the lot is not suitable for the placement of a septic system. It's just too wet for reliable operation of a leach field, especially in the spring when the ground is wet. I had a similar problem next door to me back in the mid 1980s when contractor came in and built up the property next to me. He made it three high, three feet higher than mine. And that septic system worked for about a year or so. There was a family of five in there. And when you had a good heavy rain, place stank. I don't like sewage. Uh, I complained to the owner. We gave up talking to each other. I even went to the Board of Health and they said, we'd like to help you, but we have to show, you have to show us the flow. The fact that you smell it, uh, that's not a problem. My dog would walk and lick his paws and then come down with diarrhea. I suspect, though I may not, I wouldn't be able to prove it, coliform bacteria would contribute into that problem. Percolation tests on this property across the street were performed in, uh, May of 2015. The, I talked to the fellow doing it at the time, and he said to me that the results were barely marginal. And then this was the time of year when we were running, what, 30, 40% below, uh, normal precipitation. So I questioned the results of these tests, and they're not valid for a normal year. And I think they're really misleading for justification of a septic system. Okay, now, uh, my neighbor, Michael Gentili, was supposed to come here, but he had some family issues to solve. But he asked me to read this. This is a statement directly from Michael. He says, "I originally stated that I wanted to inform the owner of the property at 53 Kensington Drive that the fields on either side of the house flood and therefore would not be good locations for a septic system." "At the original planning board meeting, I was asked if I had a picture of the flooded field, which I didn't, but now I have some, and they're presented in this presentation." "I also submitted pictures showing DEC placed fags, flags which somehow were removed prior to any survey being performed." "I was adamantly stated that no flags were removed." Well, they were. I saw them. "I then contacted Mr. Jonathan Russell, the DEC biologist, with copies of PLAT with indications of the location of the removed markers." "And he confirmed them, and they appeared to be the locations where he had originally placed them." Now, it's very hard to prove a negative. The DEC has re-flagged the wetlands area, and the newly placed flags are very close in proximity to where the flags were documented in the photographs that he had sent or that Mike Gentili had sent to Mr. Russell. So I think we're right on with the flags. Now, this is a picture of the, your flags that were put in by Russell. This is back in June of last year. He can, it's hard, you have to take my word for it. You've got to really look hard to see this one. This one is a little bit more evident, but note then. I'm sorry. Oh, you want to take over, Mike?
No.
Okay. My neighbor.
So these are the original, original flags.
I'm sorry?
These were the original.
These are the original flags from a year ago, just about a year ago.
And you're saying they're close to where the flags are currently placed as of a few days ago.
Well, that's what I want to show you. We go back. Let's go back here again. It's flags number one and two. Uh, let's go back here. One and two, okay? The newly placed markers at one and three, okay? They didn't mark number two when they re-flagged it, okay? And that's within the 100-foot. Let's see, the 100-foot wetlands boundary to the south from flag one ends in the middle of the SDA. I'll show that more clearly in a, in a, a map that I have.
And what I would, what I would say is just so, just so you know what our process is, is we won't, we'll have a new submission from the applicant showing a revised plan that indicates with DEC signature where the new flags were placed. And that will delineate the 100-foot buffer from those, from the line interpreted from those flags.
Okay.
So that's something, we don't have it tonight because it's not ready yet. They just were at the property a few days ago. But that's, we don't have that yet. We're expecting that. So this public hearing will be adjourned again until we have that document. So we can see whether or not the 100-foot buffer is close to or encroaching on any of the home envelope or, or the septic system.
I have something to say about that. I came here for your information, just, just to tell you what I'd seen. Uh, anyway. These two were put, well, let's see now. These are the new flags, the one and the three they were put, and, uh, this was one that was added. This is the one that was there, but they didn't put back the second time, and I'm not sure exactly why that happened. Okay, this again is the number two flag that's missing, okay? And it's very close proximity to the field that floods. Okay, more pictures again of the one and three that they put in, and they're missing number two. Okay. Now, this is the interesting part. Because if you go back. Let's go back a little bit here to the number one flag here and use that. Put that on the map. And measure out 100 feet and draw a circle. You can see that 100 feet from that flag, it hits the corner of the house and certainly the septic system. That's why the position of these flags is, are accurate, and that's why. That one that was replaced, take a look at that and see, ask about the missing one, why they didn't remark that. I wasn't there for the conversation with the.
Michelle from the town was there with the DEC, so I think she was, Michelle, were you comfortable?
I mean, sometimes they don't mark the, they're, they're basically, they don't mark every single point on the line. So they try to go to the, you know, they try to go to the outline, but they don't literally, you know, they just walk every, you know, 10 feet or whatever and flag it. So it's possible that that was, you know, I'm not sure why they didn't throw a flag in that exact location, but.
It was there the first time.
They did on the other side of, um, two, there was a flag thrown in, um, in a location kind of like around a little bit.
I can't get to that area. Okay. All right. Mike, you want to add anything?
Sarah, we'll go ahead and have you finish your comments, so for the order of the meeting.
That's pretty it, because Mike is actually, he's co-author of this presentation. I'd like him to pick up where I left off.
Okay. Do you have any other questions or comments for us right now?
No, I was going to end with this here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hi, sorry I'm late. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Couple of things I'd like to address and questions I'd like to ask and issues I'd like to raise.
And again, just, just so you know, I know, I know you weren't here, but we don't have the revised maps yet.
I heard that.
So we've talked about the revision, but we don't actually have maps to look at.
I understand that. And I heard that, and it's understandable seeing how the DEC didn't come out until a couple of days ago.
Right.
As Chet had mentioned, these markers were placed in, in June of last year indicating.
We understand.
The easternmost boundary of the wetland. There were additional markers which I indicated in previous photos that were also removed that went up the south side of the wooded area as depicted on the plaque. Okay.
I'm, I'm, we had Michelle at the site with the DEC and the applicant when the re-flagging was done. So I'm, regardless of what may have happened in the past, I think we're comfortable right now that as of May of 2016, we have the wetland flagged appropriately.
I was just giving that as history.
So I just want to be really.
I understand that perfectly, and I was just giving that as history.
So I, I want to be clear that the DEC is going to be signing a map, and we will use the DEC's wetland line to base any, any decisions of this board.
Okay. A question that I have about that is. If a map is submitted and for whatever reason, there was a mistake on that map. And then that map gets updated and is submitted again with new information, but with the same mistake. How is something like that addressed? And let me try to explain my concern. On the slide. Here, if I can get it to show. I don't understand how it happened or why it happened. But I believe there's an error on this map. And if this is going to be the basis for the updated information to be sent to the DEC, then they will be getting again.
No, I want, I want to clarify the way that works. So the DEC, and Michelle, you'll keep me honest here. The DEC actually comes out, and regardless of any prior flags or any prior map, they're not looking at, at anything prior. They're walking the property and they're looking and placing new flags.
I understand that. My question is, when they go to give the approval of the map, they're getting the information off of the map. They're assuming that the information on the map is accurate. And that's the basis for their decision. Is that not correct?
Right. The person at the DEC that reviews that map has actually been in the field and has looked at this property. So they have their field notes. They know what they're looking for, and they have markers and notations. And Michelle, if there's some better way to explain it, I'm going to defer to you. But my understanding is that the DEC has, has their own documentation of where they expect the line to be. And the map that would be submitted to them should be in, in line and in conformance with that. And I don't know if it's a surveyor that comes out and takes those flags or how exactly the flags are placed on the map itself.
I believe it's Ernie's firm that, that surveyed the flags and, and showed them on the map. So if it's done correctly, the DEC will review a map that's submitted to them. And they should have some sort of notes, and it should make sense to them. They, you know, they, they, I don't know if they, how they scale it off, but they could scale it off and they should scale it off. You know, yes, that's the edge of the tree line, so I put my first flag towards the edge of that tree line, and that was about 20 feet from the, you know, edge of pavement. So I know that that looks about right on the map. They should have those types of notes in there. You know, they should document that when they're out there. If they do, if they do that or they don't do that, you know, it probably depends on who's out there delineating. But, you know, somebody out there should be able to look at a revised map and say whether or not they agree with where the flags are.
And compare it to their own notes based on the fact that they've been to the property themselves.
Correct. If they're doing their job.
I have no reason to suspect that they're not, but our, but our failsafe on that, let me just go a little bit further, is that Michelle was also there.
I understand.
So Michelle has her own notes and her own photographs.
Let me show, let me show a discrepancy that I think I see on this map.
Okay.
For the engineer's edification, okay? At the point approximately here, where the start of the 100-foot line to this point is. It show, that's supposed to be the line of the wetland, okay? That line is approximately, according to this scale, 10 feet from this ditch. In effect, the current flags, which haven't been replaced, which I assume are going to be reused, in this approximate area is in fact 40 feet from that ditch. There is a difference from where this arrow starts to where the actual flag is of approximately 30 feet. And that 30 feet makes a substantial difference from here into the actual location of the house.
Okay.
And I just, I don't know how that, that error occurred. I believe it's an honest error, and I think it should be rechecked by the engineer before this gets resubmitted to the DEC. Now, there was a question at the last meeting, or statements made at the last meeting about, uh, people calling the other agencies like the DEC and the Health Department and causing some friction, if you will. I don't believe that was the case of what might have happened, because I know I personally contacted the DEC and asked some questions. I got replies and I got answers. And all of that information was shared with this planning board in copies of emails.
Right.
Okay. So. There was no intent in trying to get people to do things differently. It was my trying to get understanding of the process and understanding of what had been documented as opposed to what was reality.
We, we welcome the comments of neighboring property owners and the public for these meetings, so there's no issue with that.
I understand that, but other, okay, I'm trying to.
You're, you're fine.
Thank you.
There's no issue with that.
There was also something mentioned about the signature and the approval by the DEC of the plot being known. And this body did not know that. We, this body never had a signed copy of the plot signed by the DEC. It wasn't presented until that night.
Right.
At the last public meeting.
That's correct.
Additionally. It was questioned because I have here a printout of the DEC Permit Detail Report. Which is public access or freedom of information. And it shows that it wasn't submitted to the DEC until February 25th. And it's currently classified as incomplete as of today. So if it was submitted this, like, February 25th, how could it have been approved sometime in January?
Are you?
That's something I can't understand.
I, I want to, I think there's, there's some confusion. I think you're looking at a permit application versus the actual sign-off of the wetland delineation. Those are two very different things.
Okay, see, I, I don't know that. That's why I'm questioning it.
No, that's what that, that's the difference that you're seeing.
Excellent.
And I would, I would just add that the reason the DEC went back out to the property, the reason this board asked for that is because of comments that were brought up to us from the public. So the process that we're going through right now with the public hearing is exactly the right way to understand this. So we, we've understood the concerns that are being raised. We're going through the right processes to address those concerns, to reconcile what's actually out there, to understand the wetland locations, and to, to determine whether or not this is a viable lot. So we're still in the middle of that. I mean, we're not, we're not there yet. The applicant states that even with the movement of the line, and that there is a movement of the line a little bit further into the property, that he still feels he can, he can have a house here. So that's something that's to be determined because we don't have updated plans yet. But again, um, that's all resulting from the fact of the comments that are being shared with us at these meetings. So I don't want you to feel that those comments weren't heard or, or understood. I, I think this is exactly the hope, the result that should have happened based on the comments that were previously provided during the public hearing.
Okay. In closing then, very quickly. I personally have never accused anybody of doing anything. I just want to state that for the record.
Okay.
I personally think if the recalculation of the formula shows that this still could be two lots, it would be extremely tight. And probably not a viable fit, in my opinion. I would also like to thank the owner of the property for doing the job that he did, as other neighbors have. Excellent job in redoing that, that house. It's, was a site for, I mean, it is now a site for sorries. Because what was there was terrible. There's no doubt that what was done is excellent.
Okay.
But as far as anything else being done on that property, I don't think it's, it would be viable. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to offer comment for the Fakori application? No, okay, that's fine. Okay, so, um, sir, as you collect the pictures, you said you've provided pictures to Pam for our records, so if board members want to look at them again.
I'm going to leave with four copies.
Okay. Great.
It's a, lots of pictures. It's a big file. You can't email it. We do have four copies.
That's fine. That's fine. We appreciate that. Okay, so I think, Ernie, you want to come back up for us? We're really waiting on, I guess, the DEC to sign the map. I don't know how long that will take, and then for you to be able to revise the plan accordingly. So do you have a sense of how long that will take?
Uh, we're, you know, we're looking to get that as soon as possible. You know, just two comments I, I'd like to make regarding the presentations. One, I would, I would say most, if not all, the pictures that I saw there, and I may be mistaken, appear to be in the wetland buffer. And I will acknowledge exactly what the gentleman said.
Right.
If you look at our plan and where the septic is, the septic is actually over, it's actually over where.
Right.
Actually, where the driveway is now, all that gets moved over. There's an existing driveway gets, that gets relocated and gets moved over.
Okay.
So that's, that's number one. Number two, what the, what the gentleman said about, about the dates and the confusion and all that, typically. the dates and the confusion and all that, typically, we, what happens, and I think this is what happened there, is that the, that the wetland, the first iteration, the wetland was signed off, and then we had put a wetland application in.
Right.
And typically, if there's anything missing, and that came after that, if there's anything missing, or they need more information, what they say is it's incomplete. So that's very seldom that you submit and say, okay, you know, on the first submission, everything is fine, and now we can go to publication. The goal here is to get a wetland application that is complete, and at that point, then they go to publication.
Okay.
And publication takes about, depending on the size, but 15 to 30 days.
Okay.
So that date would fall, as the gentleman said.
Okay. There was one comment made that I just want to make sure you double-check before you resubmit plans to us regarding the 10-foot versus 40-feet away from the ditch, the one where the wetlands kind of bend and follow along the back of the property. If you can just check-
Okay.
-that location. We'll have the comments that were received tonight. You'll be able to see them. You can see where that's circled on the plan. If you can just double-check that for us.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I would say is I want to make sure that that 100-foot buffer runs along with the entire wetland line, so not an approximation, but exactly 100 feet from, from each point where that house would be. There was one, there was one place, I think I pointed out last time, not, not over here on the eastern side, but along the back of the property, where it looked like there was a, kind of a bump down in the wetland line, and I didn't see a similar bump down on the buffer. So I just want to make sure you've got that 100-foot plotted the whole way, whole way across. And then again, you know, what, whatever additional changes you need to make to show that it's a viable lot, you're going to need to make before you resubmit, so.
Right.
Michelle, do you have a sense of how soon the DEC typically signs off on these, based on when they've last visited?
I think she was, they were hoping to sign off on it pretty quickly, so if they received the map today, I think they were, what they indicated in the field, that they were going to try to look at it and get it sent back to us as quick as they could.
Okay. Ernie, how much time do you need once you have the map back to be able to make the additional plan adjustments?
You know, say a week or less, I'm sure.
So June 7th, I'm guessing, is going to be too soon, probably, with June 21st?
That'll work.
That'll work? Okay. Do, any, any final comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Fecory public hearing to June 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving into the discussions on our agenda. The first discussion is Costelli Driscoll, two lots on Old Hopewell Road.
Good evening.
Hello. Did you get your pointer?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Do you want to put something up there?
That'd be great, if you don't mind.
No, absolutely, 100 percent.
Do you have your disc over here?
Yeah, the disc, it should be over there.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, you need to sign?
Oh, sure. You can, one of our board members can sign off for you. I'm sorry, I would have called you up. I didn't realize you were here. Thank you.
He's too quiet.
Bear with us, we just, after our public hearings, we sign off for the students.
Perfect.
Get home safe.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to give us just an overview as we're waiting for the map?
Sure. We have a 50-acre parcel on Old Hopewell Road, just west of Old Hopewell and Marge's Way, owned by Kathleen Driscoll. She also owns property and a home across the street. Her daughter is looking to build a home, and so the mother and father are looking to give a piece of property to the daughter to build her home. Hence, my involvement for the design of the new home-
Okay.
...as opposed to the subdivision. So we have-
So you're not doing the subdivision?
Well, Larry Lynn is the surveyor of record.
Okay.
But I'll probably be-
That's fine.
-the person you'll be.
We know you.
So we have Old Hopewell Road, and we have Presidential is right here.
Are you saying you got the short straw? Is that what's happening?
That's what that is.
That's what I felt, I don't know.
We have Presidential here, and we have Marge's Way, where my cursor is going there, our 50 acres, and we're looking to take a piece of that. We didn't really want five acres, but it just made sense to give a little bit of frontage and go to the, you know, to one corner of the property, and whatever it worked out to be, it worked out to be. The property is relatively flat, and in this area, it's probably the hilliest portion of the, of the property. Not that we wanted that, but it is what it is. A little bit of, not wetlands, a little bit of floodplain in there on the westernmost part of the property.
Do you have any wetlands?
I, I don't, I don't believe there, there was any wetlands on the property.
Have they been delineated recently? If you've got a floodplain there, I'm just curious if there's wetlands moving.
I don't know, but we can check that.
Okay.
I don't think there's any wetland shown on the mapper, but if you look at this, you just probably need to check, because it does look like it could potentially have some wet spots anyway. So I don't, you know, there's nothing shown as regulated, but there was nothing also shown on the Fecory lot either, so it just-
Okay.
That's fine. Mike, actually, he was going to come by the office today, and he, he ditched me. There is a little pond in this corner here, just a little, you know, cattle pond, if you will. Have a couple of the barns over in that area. And again, we're just looking to, you know, pull away five acres.
And you're going to, is this just to give to a family member, you said?
Yes, absolutely, yes. The daughter.
And the daughter's going to build-
Costelli, that's correct. So that's where the Costelli comes in. The owner of the property is Driscoll. And just for a little bit of history here, the Driscolls own a considerable amount of property across the street as well. And I don't know how many years ago, six, seven, eight years ago, time flies, I wasn't involved, they subdivided a piece of the parcel on the south side of Old Hopewell and gave it to the son. So the son lives across the street, and the daughter is going to be-
Okay.
-given the property, as you see it.
Have you, have you done any preliminary, like, plot for the house, so that we know about where the house and the driveway would go?
We just, we just walked it, actually, actually Joe Dennis had called me and said, hey Al, you didn't show the house. I'm, well, we didn't know exactly yet. So the house is, is about going to be where my cursor is. That will be on the next map, of course.
Okay.
The septic system, we're taking deeps on Thursday, is in the lower part, because again, this is going uphill and coming down towards Old Hopewell Road. We've had preliminary conversations with the county, and there's a little rise in the, in Old Hopewell Road, probably just before the barns. So our driveway is probably going to be, probably to the easternmost part of the, of the property, but that's subject to a walk with the county DPW. So a formal application has not been made to them yet. But next time, we'll have that house plotted.
And the proposed driveway location, too, so we can check site distances and things like that. Okay?
Absolutely.
And did you, I know you said the septic towards the front, the well in the back?
Absolutely. I'm sorry?
Well would be towards the back, behind the house? Okay.
Absolutely, 100 percent, yep.
All right.
Probably right behind the house.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay. I know we don't have a driveway or a proposed house yet, Dave, so anything we-
No, I, I just stated, you've met with the county, you're going to meet with the county.
Yes, I, I met with them informally on another project several weeks ago, and I brought this up, and I just sent something to Roy Garrick's up there just at the end of last week. Not a formal application, basically explaining a little sketch of what we were looking to do. You don't have that here, and suggesting a walk out there, because again, there is a little bit of a rise in the, in the road there.
That is good, because as you know, side distance will be-
100 percent, absolutely.
Especially with the close proximity to President Way.
Yep.
So, you know, I guess on your resubmission, when you get into the details, you would show-
Absolutely.
...the side distance measurements.
Yes.
And also the distance to President Way.
Not a problem, yep.
Okay. The other thing, they didn't mention anything about the barn encroaching on the, on the right of way?
No, I saw that in, now Larry Lynn, who's the surveyor of record, I guess in, in his research, when he put together the plot, brought to my attention the fact that, hey Al, I'm not so sure that the county didn't take part of Old Hopewell Road. But Joe is saying, yeah, I think they may own it, and I guess we'll go through that when the time comes. If in fact, they had already taken it, then, then the comment from Joe about the proximity of the barn to Old Hopewell Road is a moot point, because they've already accepted it, and there's nothing we can do.
That'll come out in the meeting.
Yes, absolutely, 100 percent, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing, we will get updated plans.
Oh, 100 percent, yes, absolutely.
Andy, anything?
I mean, I think we've covered a lot of it already. You know, the wetlands needed to be delineated, if there are any, certainly. It does appear that the property is, is within 500 feet of the town of Wapinjir, so we would need to send some notification to them of what's going on.
Right. I think we have to wait till we have at least the house located before we can circulate, but we will have to circulate for lead agency.
Fine, not a problem.
That's a good point.
Mentioned about the right-of-way, it sounds like that's going to be resolved.
Mm-hmm.
And the barn. In terms of the driveway, you know, in addition to the location, of course, we need to see grading for the driveway and what will be required to meet the town standards. And it does look like there's a little bit of a low point, kind of, kind of near where the driveway is going to go. Is it wet now?
It's, it's, it's not wet there, but it is low. Matter of fact, again, I would rather have it a little bit further west of my, my frontage, if you will, because it's pretty level, right about at the westernmost property line that we've established there. But I, I'm afraid that there may be a site distance issue on Old Hopewell Road. And I know that the county, again, there's a conflict conversely with, with the proximity to Presidential Way, so we're caught between the rock and the hard place. As I go closer to Presidential Way, there is a little bit more of a dip. We went over it with the owner, probably have to fill, maybe a covert, whatever needs to be done. But it does, there is a definite depression in the corner there, as opposed to 100, 125 feet, and you can easily see the, the difference. So, yeah, that'll be worked out with, I'm sure, the county in both instances, the site distance and whatever drainage issues, or what needs to be done there.
Do we need to be present if there's going to be a meeting with the DOT? Do you want to?
It's the county, it's not DOT.
Or county, okay, sorry.
County, right. Department of Public Works, right.
Okay.
And I have no problem when I set up that meeting. I can let whoever know.
If you just let us know that way.
Anybody can want to be there, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then the last thing, the last comment that I'll mention from the letter has to do with, you know, calculation of buildable area. I realize that, you know, it's, it's just a single lot to give to the daughter. I don't know, it's, it's probably up to the boards, it's at the board's discretion, I guess, if you want to do that calculation, to see how many lots could actually be-
Well, I think at minimum, we need to understand for segmentation purposes, as you're, you're taking a small piece off a very large lot. We want to make sure that what your development plans in the future would be.
Zero. We already went over that. That was one of the first things I went over with the, with the owner. Hey, listen, you can't cut off five acres today and then come back two years from now and keep on cutting it up. Segmentation, 100 percent. There's no problem with putting a note on the plan or whatever, saying no further development, not forever, but for five years, 10 years, whatever the case. She has, they have no intention of cutting it up right now, and so if you want that note added, or whatever verbiage you want, that's not a problem. They understand it, as I explained it to them, so.
We would require that there's some standard language, I think we typically use, just to ensure that the, it's clear that from a seeker perspective, we don't need to study further.
Not a problem.
Michelle, are you, do we need to pursue that further from a seeker perspective? As long as the applicant's representing there's no further development at this time, and understands that once the subdivision happens, there would be no further development for at least a period of, is it five years or 10?
I think it's five years.
Five years, yes.
Actually, it's five years, but they, they have no intent even, so we can put that note on the, I can get your letter from the homeowner, whatever you want.
The code currently restricts them from it, anyway, so.
I'm so glad you want it.
And he's pretty much covered all my comments, because I wanted the driveway location and the house location, and I think we, and potential, if there's any wetlands out there, to show that up, so.
Yeah, that's standard stuff, exactly.
Do you have other questions for us?
No. I, I think we're pretty good. I mean, again, I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, we will, once you give us, I think, the next map, as long as it has all those things on it, we'll be able to circulate.
Not a problem.
We can't, we can't do that yet, until you have those things on there.
Understood. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Global Foundries, eight lots on Route 52 and Lime Kiln Road.
Good evening. I'm Martin Bayard with the Chazen Companies. I'm here to present eight-lot subdivision on behalf of Global Foundries. I have a-
I'm sorry, can I just clarify, because I saw some notes where there's actually a ninth lot?
Well, yeah, I saw that from Joe Dennis's comments.
Right.
And I, he may be referring to the, there are these road lots, if you will, you know, technically, they're lots, they're not building lots. But he may, I'm only surmising that he may be referring to that.
Okay.
Before I get too far into it, I have a PDF I could put up on the screen, if that would be helpful.
Great, fantastic. Yeah, thank you. Scott, do you know if we would typically, if there's a quote-unquote parcel that includes the roads that would eventually be dedicated, do we count that as a lot? I'm assuming we need to, right? Because they're, they're breaking, one of the, one of the parcels here are the things that look like the roads.
I don't think we consider that a lot. That's just right-of-way. I don't think that's considered a lot.
But it's not going to be dedicated right-of-way. Does it have to stay linked to one of the other lots, and then we delink it at the time the roads are being dedicated? Or how do we typically do that? We can ask Tom. I just, I want to make sure we capture it correctly.
Yeah, I don't believe it's a lot, though. It's a right-of-way.
Okay.
I thought Joe was talking about across the road.
Let's see. Pointer?
Sorry.
Oh.
Note? Oh.
Pam, do we have the, the remote? I think the remote has one on it. Bear with us.
Hmm.
Thank you, Pam.
So I wasn't quite part of the, the conversation to do with the road right-of-ways. Do you, do you want to continue?
We'll just, yeah, we'll just clarify how they need to be displayed. We'll, we'll probably provide that as part of the next round of comment letters, if that's all right.
Okay.
I'm not worried about it. I just want to make sure we capture it correctly.
All right. Suffice to say, they will be fee, you know, that's, that's how we create these lots, is they have to be fee to, to, in order to create the lots.
Okay.
Versus an easement.
But you are intending to dedicate the roads to the town at some point, or some of the roads that are shown?
Yes, there have been discussions to that, to that effect.
Okay.
So what I'd like to do is just kind of go through some of the lots and discuss what their purpose is going to be. This lot to the west, northwest, it's a little hard to see with this print, but I think it's Lot 1. That lot is going to be created as global transportation lot, and it's going to, of course, continue to contain the sewage treatment plant and function in that same way. So that, that lot will remain in the same purpose as it has been.
Okay.
The Lot 5-
Is there any change to the delineation of that lot? Are you changing the line at all?
It's gotten bigger, right? Versus what it-
Existing today?
Oh, well, right now, the-
It's part of the main parcel?
There's only one parcel.
Got it, okay, all right.
Right, that's involved. Eight lots out of one. Lot 5, in the middle, will continue to be the chip fab fabrication function that it's been doing. to be the chip fab fabrication function that it's been doing, so that will not change. And that's kind of the core light industrial area, of course. The remainder of the lots' purposes, as far as future purpose, has not been determined at this time, what kind of function they will, or purpose they will have.
Will any of them, at the time of this subdivision, have any functioning buildings or operating?
Will any of the remainder of the lots?
Other lots, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's Lot 3 up there, there's a building, there's a, and that'll remain. Lot 4, there is some facility on there, not a building, but some industrial-related facility, that will remain. And then I think the rest of them, in the lower southerly area, particularly these abutting 84 are primarily vacant, you know, it's just vacant property.
Right, okay.
And then Lot 7, of course, contains buildings in use at this time, and they will remain.
Continue, okay. So, a couple of comments about that, I think we also mentioned this at our last meeting, but I want to make sure if we need cross-access agreements, cross-parking agreements between these lots, that we understand what that looks like, and I don't know if you've already provided that detail, but we need to know that. The other thing I would say is, your existing uses at the time of the subdivision are fine. If you're going to expand the use of any of the lots after the subdivision, you'd be coming back for potential change of use or for site plan revisions as needed as you're doing that. So each one would come back as you make changes or as you're expanding their use. Does that make sense?
Yes, that is understood.
Okay.
So, yes, as far as your comment about cross-easements, there will be, and we are in the process of working that out, and some of it has already been presented on the subdivision map. So, and I'll be glad to explain that if you wish.
At minimum, what we want to understand, and if you can do that this evening, that's fine, as long as you've also submitted the paperwork for it, but at minimum, what we need to make sure is any existing use, that's an ongoing use that will continue after the subdivision, that we have sufficient parking for it either on that lot, or that the cross-access and cross-parking easements are in place.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, the cross-parking easements are in place if needed. Cross-access might be universal, I guess, based on your, the way you're laying out the road system, I, again, we just need you to provide that detail to us.
Certainly, we can do that.
Okay.
Any other questions, or?
Not so far.
Okay. Again, I would be glad to explain any other portions of it, but that is, in essence, the outline of it.
Okay. So, and Michelle, I'm going to, if, I want to make sure, I think there's a particular section of our code that we're using, do you want to?
Sure. So, there's a special permit in the code currently that exists, 19467.3, which is called Creation of Certain Lots in the I-1 District, and it allows subdivision of lots in industrial districts, and it essentially, there's a lot of eligibility requirements and standards that go along with it, and I've reviewed the proposed subdivision and checked the standards of that special permit with what is being proposed, and it does meet those. And what it does allow for is the waiver of certain bulk requirements, things that you would typically see, you know, zero lot lines it allows for. It asks for provision of easements for parking and utilities and other infrastructure, so all those types of things are discussed in the special permit. And at this time, the subdivision does meet the requirements of that particular special permit.
So what I wanted to make sure we talked about this evening is that one of those requirements is, I think it's 150 acres minimum, so you're fine right now.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think any of the lots you're creating are more than 150 acres, so any further subdivision would not meet these special permit requirements because you won't have enough acreage to do it. So I'm making that comment to you because if you do think any of these would be further subdivided down the road, it may be worth it to do lesser lots right now and preserve your ability to use the special permit again. If you're confident that this is the lots that you're going to need, or that any additional lots you'd meet, you'd be able to meet all the bulk requirements, then I think you're fine. But I just want to make sure we're calling your attention to it because you are taking advantage of the special permit in the coding right now, but you're going to limit yourself for the future by creating these lots the way they're proposed. Does that make sense?
Yes, and appreciate you pointing that out, but yes, we are aware of that.
Okay. I guess just the only other, not only other, but the other things we would run through is that typically, as we create subdivisions like this, you're not proposing any new usage, so I think at this time, we're not necessarily talking about doing a traffic study or doing any other additional seeker right now, but it's really important to say, as you create these lots, I'm sure you're going to want to probably expand the use of these lots. We're going to need to, at some point, define kind of the overall picture of what's currently existing, so that as you move forward in developing this property, that we know where we trigger things like additional traffic studies or additional seeker studies and things like that. So, I just want to make sure that, Dave, if there's anything we need from the applicant to be able to establish what I'm going to call our baseline, which is today's usage, so you're fine with today's usage after the subdivision, the current usage doesn't require any additional study, but as you want to expand that usage, we may be tripping into other types of studies that would be required.
And to that point, I've made the request that they provide us with a list of the current buildings, their square footage, and the square footage that is currently being used of those buildings, so I know some of the buildings have some vacant space, and the type of use that it is, light industrial, office, whatever is happening in those locations.
And the breakout of the square footage within the building for the usage, okay.
Correct.
That assists us with parking calculations and things like that as well, so it'll help us as you come in with change of use requests or with actual site plan changes, we'll be able to figure out what the differences will be with parking or with traffic trips and things like that.
Mm-hmm. For your baseline, we would use the, or the original traffic impact study, which I know you have available to you. I think that was dated in 84.
That was...
The original...
That was done by IBM in 84.
Yeah, for the original complex. I think right there, it specifies the expected trip generation, and also the, it identifies the mitigation, which is, which has been put in place now. So that should be your threshold.
That's the baseline.
Yeah, that's where you, you know, you shouldn't exceed that. The moment you exceed that, well, obviously, it needs to be addressed. The second issue I have, and I know it's early in the process, but the second issue I have is access from the site to the adjacent roadway network, specifically Route 50, 52. As you know, there's, I think Gate 1 is now closed, it's, you know, the signal has been decommissioned, it's gated. I think on Limekiln, there are a couple gates that are now closed. Have you given any thought to what would happen to these locations as the site develops and as the subdivision proceeds?
Frankly, we have not gotten that far into it.
Yeah, I understand we're early, but I mean, these are things that, you know, need to be addressed.
We'll give that some thought.
Right, because that was, those signals were installed as part of the initial mitigation. Now, and we welcome the revitalization of the site, but at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, traffic is mitigated where necessary.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's something that you might want to...
Sure, we'll take a look at it.
And just to know from Steve Caswell and other planning board members joined us, so. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Michelle, oh, sorry.
That's...
Okay, I was just going to say, Michelle, is there any, anything else we wanted to cover for the subdivision itself?
I think, right now, I mean, I think you've said it basically, any further, the subdivision is one action, but any further action on these sites would be subject to site-specific seeker and planning board review.
And site-specific, if there's bulk regulation for new buildings being built and things like that, the new site, the development of each of these individual sites will now be subject to all of those regulations.
Mm-hmm, okay, yes, thank you.
I'm sure you knew that, I just wanted to make sure that we were saying that so that if that's surprise, or you thought that the special permit would allow that to carry forward, I just think we just need to be very clear on what is permitted and not permitted as you go forward with the development.
No, it's worth saying, I appreciate that.
Michelle, I had a note from last time, I think, did we ask if there were wetlands on the site, or if there was any additional delineation of wetlands that are needed for the actual subdivision, or will that come with site development?
There's definitely wetlands on the site, and they're fairly well-mapped. I actually have been speaking with DEC about mapped wetlands on the site because the town currently has a project that, infrastructure project that they're working off-site on, and we're talking about some of the wetlands on this site, and they were walked, some of them were walked fairly recently by DEC, and she was pretty comfortable about the mapping out there. But certainly, as we move forward with investigations and ultimately with, if there is going to be further development on the site, they would certainly have to look at the wetlands and possibly redelineate.
But not needed right now, since we're not expanding the site.
I don't think so, because I think the lots that we see right now, we're not, we're not changing anything at this current time.
Not changing the usage or any site plan, okay. And to that point, I think the last time we were in, we had asked whether there was going to be any site plan changes in addition to the subdivision, or if this was just the pure subdivision. There was some discussion about possibly building some additional buildings on the, small buildings on the site.
I believe that might be related to the next party that's going to be up after us, IBM.
Okay.
But some water treatment facilities.
Right.
So, there is, that's not part of our application, but it does relate to the site.
So you'll be signing another application that would actually be a site plan amendment, this is the pure subdivision?
Yes.
Is that, am I correct?
Well, actually, we were really only thinking in terms of the pure subdivision, but you're saying we need to...
Well, I think I can clarify that. The applicant, this applicant owns the site, and they currently have an agreement with the former owner of the site for site remediation or cleanup. And as a result, the Global Foundries would have to be, would have to allow them to utilize the, or we have to be a cosigner on the application because they own the property.
Next application, correct, okay.
Exactly.
So this is able to move forward as a pure subdivision, but we have to be aware of the subdivision because the next application that wants to make site plan changes is going to have to reflect these new lines, right?
Correct, correct.
So, because ultimately, there may be, I don't know what project is going to be completed first, but it's possible that when the subdivision is completed, there may be additional buildings that are not currently shown on this map, on the, on the actual site plan. Okay, very good.
Michelle, where are the wetlands on the, on the site today?
They're, well, they're all over the place.
I can, I can show you roughly, if you, but let me just...
Some of the, the actual parking that's out there right now is within wetland buffer.
Really?
Yeah, because it was prior, built prior.
But it would have predated the wetland regulations.
So it's closer to probably on the John Jay side over there?
Or would have been permitted, I guess, either way.
Yeah, the, the Central Hudson easement that goes down the middle is, is pretty wet in there, and then all along the outskirts.
See who they are.
A little hard to see on this, but...
The shaded areas?
Yeah, these shaded areas are the general idea. Here, here, here. Again, they haven't been delineated, so this is just from a standard New York State website at this time.
Greg, are you able to see that?
Yeah. Is it sloping downward towards the wetlands, or is it flat?
What is, your question is, what is the terrain?
Yeah.
Let's see, it's actually, yes, it's, it's actually sloping down from 84 in this direction, and over here, I believe something comparable. So, yeah, this is lower, this is higher over 84.
And there's a, there's a tributary, or whatever, there's a gilder sleeve creek runs through, can you point that out?
Yeah, that's along the westerly edge.
Do you anticipate any further adjustments of the, any further significant adjustments of the subdivision lines?
No, we don't. We believe this is it.
Okay, so I think, Michelle, we're probably ready to circulate for lead agency. We've got a few agencies we need to notify and circulate, so, do I have a motion to circulate for lead agency for the Global Foundries request? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So I would just ask you to work with our planning office to prepare the circulations with Michelle and Pam, we can make sure we can get those in the mail. They take, we allow a 30-day comment period, so the next time we see you, we would be able to declare lead agency as soon as at least that 30 days has lapsed from the time you make the mailing.
Okay, sure, we'll work with Michelle.
Okay. Michelle, do we, I think we're ready to schedule a public hearing as well, unless you disagree. I think we've got what we need for the subdivision itself. I know there, as further development comes along, we'll probably need other information, but is there anything significant that's missing that would stop us from scheduling this for a public hearing at this point? Okay. So we need, how long do you think it would take you to circulate for lead agency? We like to be able to declare lead agency as we open our public hearings, so we're at May 17th. We'd be looking at either June 21st, that's maybe a little bit tight, unless you could get it in the mail this week.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to get it in the mail this week.
Okay, then, we have July 5th or July 19th?
July 5th.
Okay. And aside from the circulation, is there anything else that we would need prior to being able to schedule a, sorry, prior to being able to open the public hearing? We have notice requirements, and you're going to need to put postings on the property and things like that, the planning office can give you those instructions. So do I have a motion to schedule the Global Foundries eight lot subdivision for public hearing on July 5th?
So moved.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so work with, work with the town, we want to make sure that you get your mailing out for lead agency at least 30 days prior to July 5th, so you've got a couple weeks, but we want to make sure that's out, and then make sure you understand all the notice and postings that need to go up, and the neighboring property notices that need to go out to be able to open the hearing.
Okay, certainly, we'll pay attention to them.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the IBM groundwater remediation on Route 52. Steve, are you recused from hearing discussions on IBM items?
I can, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I can listen and then...
I'm asking, I'm just, I want to make sure we're, for the order, we're clear.
Yeah, I'm not officially recused, no. I'll listen and... And decide at that point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dean Chartran, I'm a program manager with IBM's Corporate Environmental Affairs. I'm here this evening with two of my colleagues to provide you an overview of our site plan application to construct three groundwater treatment facilities at the former IBM East Fishkill site, now the Global Foundry one that we just heard about. With me is Joe Memm.
You're aware of the subdivision plans on that site, the current subdivision plans?
Beg your pardon?
You're aware of the current subdivision plans for that site?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm with Joe Memm, he's a senior engineer with Benar and Larios. He and his colleagues are providing the engineering and design services for the project. Also in attendance is Dorothy Bergman, she's a senior hydrogeologist and associate with Groundwater Sciences who has assisted IBM for over 20 years in the groundwater remediation program at the site. I'm going to ask Joe to walk you through the details here, but I did want to take a couple minutes and just provide you a little background and the basis for the request. IBM's been conducting a groundwater remediation program for well over 35 years, it's meant to address releases of chemicals that... We also, to ensure that we continue to have the ability to implement the remediation program, we did record certain easements and covenants that run with the property. These easements and rights, you know, allow us access to the property itself, use utilities and basically things that are needed to implement the remediation program, including construction of new treatment systems and so forth.
Okay.
The primary component of the remediation program is really just pumping groundwater from wells located throughout the facility. It's meant to prevent chemicals in groundwater from migrating further, keep it contained. Groundwater is extracted from these wells and pumped to a central treatments facility where treatment occurs.
Is that the same treatment facility that's currently on the site marked as Lot 1 or is that, do you have separate treatment facilities specifically?
It's a separate treatment facility. I don't know the lot number. I know Lot 1 is the sanitary, but this is a different facility.
Okay.
Okay. The remediation system is extensively interconnected or intertwined with the existing site infrastructure. For example, the treatment facility I was referring to is located in a Global Foundries building. There's probably thousands of feet of piping, control conduit and other infrastructure that runs through the site underground. Some of it goes through utility tunnels. Some of this also goes through buildings. In addition, the monitoring and control systems for the wells are integrated into Global Foundry central facility control system. So just a few examples of just, to indicate that, you know, we're pretty well embedded within the existing infrastructure going forward. So the purpose of this project is to, is to construct these standalone groundwater treatment facilities so we can separate the IBM remediation system from Global Foundries. These systems will be owned and operated by IBM, which will allow IBM to meet our remediation requirements under the permit regardless of site ownership or site use, neither current or in the future. And we would have minimal dependencies on other parties in order to fill, fulfill our obligations.
When you say owned by, is that like a, would there just be like a ground lease or something to, and you would build on the ground lease for these?
We, that right is in these declarations I referred to earlier in terms of covenants, restrictions and easements.
Okay, are there specific sections of the property where you have the ability to build or is it wherever it's needed?
Wherever is needed, subject to, you know, we're cognizant of business needs of owners and, you know...
So you're not going to ask somebody to take a building down so you can put, you're going to try to facilitate and work around what's there?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. And lastly, before I turn this over to Joe, concurrent with this application, we're also preparing an application for New York State DEC to, for a speedies permit for discharge of the treated groundwater once these systems are completed and...
Where is that groundwater discharged now?
Right now, it's currently being reused at the site to get subsequent treatment and gets reprocessed. Historically, the site has reused the groundwater.
Okay, why wouldn't it continue to reuse it as, is there something changing?
There's a short-term agreement to allow Global to reuse it, but IBM's not in the long-term business of providing water to third parties.
Okay.
And again, like I said, we're here for the long haul.
So, so, and I'm sorry, because I'm not familiar with this, so I just, if I'm asking really simple questions, just bear with me. So you're, you're pumping out of the ground now into your own treatment facilities on site? And then that water is not, where's that, where's that water going now?
It get, there's, the site gets water from multiple sources, so some of that is blended and some of it's retreated, you know, for manufacturing or for other site uses.
But specifically, your, your water is coming, being pumped out of the ground?
Right.
From wells on site, being treated by you? And then it's being used right now in a man, and then post-treatment, it's being used for other purposes? Is that the site, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Is anything that you're pumping right now going directly into the creek or into some other effluent?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So there's an existing treatment plant on the site, right? That services the site right now? So are you proposing to modify that treatment plant so that what you're pumping, instead of going through the manufacturing, is going direct to the treatment plant under their permit?
No, we're, we're proposing to replace the one central treatment system with three separate systems that'll be strictly IBM-owned and operated and not be reused.
Okay, so not be reused, but I guess I'm, okay, not be reused, but wouldn't that effluent then just go directly to the, to the treatment plant on site and be part of the effluent from that treatment plant?
No, not under this plan, no.
But why not? I guess I'm just asking the question, why not? Because there, this site as a whole has, and, and I think this site as a whole has a treatment plant that has effluent. Your effluent is actually part of that because it's being reused in the manufacturing. If I'm saying that correctly, stop me if I'm not.
You're correct.
And so what you're saying is you're, you want to increase the effluent coming from the site by having a different permit and have a different, an additional treatment plant?
Correct, dedicated groundwater treatment system.
Okay. Will the quality of that effluent be the same as what's coming out of the treatment, the current treatment plant?
For the chemicals that are in the groundwater, yes. I mean, the current treatment plant has a variety of other, you know, constituents that it need to treat for, but for the chemicals that are in the groundwater, they'll meet or exceed the current discharge limits from, that go through the sanitary plant.
Okay, so there's nothing the sanitary plant would be doing if it was receiving your water directly that would be reducing any contamination or, or anything, taking anything out of the water you're currently pumping after you do your current treatment?
Correct.
Okay. Have you done any, any review of the volumes that you're talking about here? Is, I don't, is it a daily volume? Is it an hourly volume that you're measuring? What's your...
Yes, and we have some of that information that Joe can provide, perhaps that might answer some of the questions. And we can circle back if it doesn't.
Okay. Okay. My, right now, I think the existing onsite plant, and again, if I have, if I'm not saying this correctly, please correct me, I think the existing plant is discharging into a stream, a local stream?
Correct.
Are you also proposing to have another discharge into that stream?
Correct.
Are you proposing then to reduce the permitted effluent out of the sewage treatment plant that's there so that net-net, we're still at the same level of, of discharge?
Well, the sewage, sanitary plant is Global Foundries' operations. So to answer your question, is there going to be an increase of flow from the site as a total regardless whether it's IBM or Global Foundries? Yes, there will be an increase.
Okay. Does there have to be? Does the agreement allow you to discharge direct to their treatment plant so that your effluent would be part of the total effluent that's already approved for the site? And I, again, I'm sorry if I'm using wrong terms here if that doesn't make sense, but...
I'm not sure I quite follow your question.
So, so from what you said, you said that you have the ability to come onsite, to pull water out of the ground, to treat it? And I'm assuming your agreement also allows you to send that water to the treatment plant for, to be released into the stream as effluent? Is that correct?
And that specific was not contemplated in the agreement. The, the assumption was that it, we had treated through these new treatment facilities and then be direct discharge, not going through the sanitary plant.
But does it have the ability to do that?
Again, I'm not quite sure I'm following your line of question.
So, so we have a, an existing treatment plant on this site that has an existing permit that allows, and I don't know what the numbers are, but we can, we can figure that out, that allows a certain amount of discharge already into the creek. And I think it has capacity and it's already accepting your current flow. I'm not clear why, if you need to change the way you're treating the water or that you don't want to use it in the post, post-treatment process anymore, I'm not clear why you would need a separate effluent discharge versus just sending whatever you're treating into that treatment plant that already has an approved effluent into the creek?
I'm going to give Joe a chance, maybe, I may be misunderstanding where you're going with this. Let me give Joe a shot here.
Do you understand what I'm saying or, okay?
If I do.
Okay, and I'm just going to have you come to the mic so we can hear you, but thank you.
My name's Joe Memes. I'm with Bneir and Larios Engineers. I'm going to pull this closer so I can use it.
Sure.
Going back to your question of, of what operation is going on today relative to groundwater remediation? There's certain wells out at this site right now that are pumping groundwater. I'll get into the specific details in a second. But the groundwater is being extracted from the ground. It's processed in a central carbon treatment facility located right about here.
Okay.
That waters, so that, it's processed and treated, then that water is used...
That's owned by IBM? That, that's your own, your treatment?
No, that's owned by Global Foundries.
Oh, okay, okay. So they're treating on your behalf or you have the rights to use their facilities?
It used to be IBM, it's part of the divestiture that became Global Foundries' plant, part of their plant. So it, this treatment plant receives pumped groundwater. It also receives processed water from the Duchess County Water Pipeline. It's co-mingled and that's their net processed water that they use when they're ma, doing their manufacturing operation.
Okay.
At that point, after they're done manufacturing, it goes over to what you now know as Lot 1.
Okay.
Sanitary facility where it's treated again.
Okay.
And then it's discharged to the Gildersleeve Brook.
Okay.
Does that help?
It does, it does.
Okay, so that's what's happening today. What we're proposing as part of this new project is the groundwater is removed, same thing, same pumping, same wells are pumping, but instead of it going to this one central treatment plant, we will have a treatment plant right near each individual well that treats that pumped groundwater. And then that ground, then that treated groundwater is discharged under a speedies permit. And they'll, it'll eventually go to the Gildersleeve Brook. There's a discharge, these two are discharged...
What would it use? The, the parking lot culvert system or what, what would you be discharging to if it's...
You're going to dis, excuse me, it'll be discharged into the existing storm sewer systems.
Storm sewer, okay.
That goes to monitored outfalls. So part of it will be going to Outfall 001?
42.
Excuse me, part of it will be going to a se, this?
I won't hold you to the numbers for this discussion.
It's going to be going to, it'll be a permitted Outfall 42.
Okay.
And these two effluents from these buildings will be going to separate permitted outfalls which eventually drain to Outfall 004. Did you get my notes? I'm going to need the...
It's fine.
And these two discharge to Outfall 004, which then drains around, comes to the Gildersleeve Brook and flows northward.
Okay. So the, the quality of that water that you would be releasing through a storm water system, how does that compare to the quality of the water that would be coming out of the sewage treatment plant?
They, they will have separate monitoring parameters that have to be, meet DEC requirements and it'll be equiv, they'll be at least as clean as it is today, if not cleaner.
I'm going to ask my question again. How will that compare to what's coming out of the sewage treatment plant? Is it, is, does storm water by its nature have more like oils from the parking lot that are going to be in that water versus what's coming out of the sewage treatment plant or...
Let me try to answer the question, or let me try to restate. You're asking what will the quality of the water from the groundwater treatment systems be compared to what it is today?
So as a layperson, what I'm hearing you say is that you pull water out of the ground, you treat it, it goes through another process that's probably going to add things to it and then you treat it again and there's an outflow?
Correct.
Effluent out, fall to the, I'm sorry, I'm going to use wrong terms, just bear with me. And there's a quality to that water?
Correct.
And what I'm asking is how will that quality to that water differ, if at all, from the water that you're, this process that you're proposing where you're going to pull it out of the ground, treat it in three separate facilities and put it into the storm water drainage system?
It will be of equal quality.
Equal or better?
Yes.
That's my question.
Yes.
Is that controlled through the permitting process and is that something that the town makes comment on or how, who controls that? I'm sorry, I'm asking a...
It would be controlled by the DEC in the permitting process. They're probably going to have sampling requirements.
It's the DEC, but is this, is this a DEC site or is this an EPA or a...
This is a, this site is regulated by the DEC, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
Okay, okay.
Before I get into details, I don't know if Dean had a chance to finish his general introduction, so.
I'll set.
You're good?
I'm ready to transition.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think, did you have something else you wanted to share or was that...
In general, the state of New York regulates storm water discharges and any discharge to streams through their speedies program.
Okay, I'm not very good at this stuff, so I'm going to probably ask a lot of dumb questions, so just keep me on track.
Correct. There is an extensive permit with the DEC. It's called a speedies permit, State Pollution Elimination Discharge Permit.
Okay.
That is in place for this plant and it monitors the wastewater from the processes and it monitors just the normal storm water that flows across the ground and happens to hit a, a pipe. Is, is monitored, tested and those are reported on a regular basis.
Okay.
What's, will happen as part of this project that we're proposing, the groundwater treatment buildings, is IBM has made a separate application to DEC for the three buildings in the three specific spots where there'll be discharging water to get those as regulated outfalls.
Okay. Are you doing this because the DEC is unhappy with the processing that's happening right now? They don't want the secondary manufacturing or what's, what's causing this to change right now? Because it seems like some, you're doing something that's working right now and it seems like you're putting a lot of effort into making changes, so...
That is an excellent question. Correct. The main reason that, that this project is being proposed is IBM divested itself of the manufacturing operations, but it retained all the responsibility to, to continue cleaning up the groundwater. Since they no longer have direct control of this current treatment building, they want to be able to know that...
Hey, IBM?
IBM wants to be, wants to assure themselves, the public and the town, that they have the controls in place, the equipment in place. It's not interrupted by a manufacturing operation or anything. They want to know that they can treat that groundwater long-term to do the environmental cleanup that they have to do. And the only way to, to assure themselves of that is to have a separate buildings, buildings to do that groundwater treatment.
So I'm with you on that part of it. I understand what you're saying. I'm still not clear why you need a separate discharge and why you can't take your assurance you're coming out of three plants and still put it through the existing plant that already has the permit. And here's what I'm getting at, and again, we haven't talked numbers yet, so help me understand what the change here is, but it sounds to me like you're asking to increase the discharge to the creek, right? So net-net, there'd be an increase? Because whatever you're pulling now that's being used somewhere, if it's not being used there, they're still probably going to need to do that manufacturing process. We heard from the prior applicant that they're keeping all the existing uses at the site. And so now you're increasing one point, the, the storm water effluent, sounds like it would be increasing through your new permit.
There, I didn't get to that in the discussion. There's, there'll be no increase in storm water discharge... That is an excellent question.
Okay.
Correct. The main reason that this project is being proposed is IBM divested itself of the manufacturing operations, but it retained all the responsibility to continue cleaning up the groundwater. Since they no longer have direct control of this current treatment building, they want to be able to know that.
Hey, IBM?
IBM wants to be, wants to assure themselves, the public and the town, that they have the controls in place, the equipment in place, it's not interrupted by a manufacturing operation or anything. They want to know that they can treat that groundwater long-term to do the environmental cleanup that they have to do. And the only way to assure themselves of that is to have a separate buildings, buildings to do that groundwater treatment.
So I'm with you on that part of it. I understand what you're saying. I'm still not clear why you need a separate discharge and why you can't take your assurance you're coming out of three plants and still put it through the existing plant that already has the permit. And here's what I'm getting at, and again, we haven't talked numbers yet, so help me understand what the change here is, but it sounds to me like you're asking to increase the discharge to the creek, right? So net-net, there'd be an increase. Because whatever you're pulling now that's being used somewhere, if it's not being used there, they're still probably going to need to do that manufacturing process. We heard from the prior applicant that they're keeping all the existing uses at the site, and so now you're increasing one point, the stormwater effluent, sounds like it would be increasing through your new permit.
There, I didn't get to that in the discussion, there'll be no increase in stormwater discharge from this proposed project. But I'll get to that in a second. You're talking about processed water or treated effluent waters.
Right.
Couple different ways to look at it.
Okay.
From a IBM treating groundwater standpoint, they're not changing their operation at all. They're going to, it's actually out there operating today, and they're going to continue treating and processing that water, so there's no net change there.
But you're going to operate in three plants instead of the one plant?
Yeah, but that's not creating any more water. It's the three same pumping wells.
Okay.
I think your point is, if Global Foundries needs to make that water up because they're no longer receiving it from pumped groundwater, they may pull it in from the Duchess County Pipeline or other sources, that's up to them, that then may be an increase in discharge. I can't speak for that Global Foundries.
But I'm assuming that your permit, that you're requesting, is a request to increase effluent to the creek through the stormwater system? Because right now, you're, and again, if I'm saying this wrong, somebody's stopping, but what I'm understanding from what you're saying is your effluent is being released through the treatment plant through their permitting and whatever maximums they're subject to.
Correct.
You're going to pull that out of their permit.
Within the DEC permit, there are provisions to discharge up to, and I'm now going to start diving into a few numbers here with you.
That's fine, that's fine.
Six million gallons per day of water to outfall 001.
Okay.
The permit also allows up to one and a half million gallons a day to out, of treated groundwater to outfall 004.
Is that the stormwater outflow?
That treats, the outfall 004, which is over at this location here, can receive treated groundwater or, and stormwater.
Okay. So you're not asking to increase the 1.5?
No, we're not.
So net-net, right now, this site has the ability to discharge up to seven and a half million gallons per day.
That is correct.
And that will not change?
That is correct.
But the location of the discharge will change because you're going, moving however much your process is.
Instead of all of our, instead of all of our groundwater, you know, getting used here, eventually coming over to here and then being discharged, part of it's going to be here, part of it's going to be here, and part of it's going to be here.
But eventually, all through the culverts and discharged into the creek?
It's going to come around eventually, yes.
It's not that it's going somewhere else or being absorbed by the ground, it's going into the creek.
It'll get to the Gildersleeve Brook, correct.
Or is the differentiation, is it the permitted discharge? Is the permitted discharge going to increase?
No, no, the permitted discharge is not going to increase.
It's still going to be 7.5 minutes?
Yes.
So you're modifying one of the permits to allow this water to be discharged through the second?
Through, at these thr, three separate outfalls, that's correct.
So, I'm sorry.
004, what's the current hundred-year runout through 004?
Um, the question that Scott was asking, what is the hundred-year, I think you said, what's a hundred-year stormwater discharge in outfall 004?
Right.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Because you'd have to know that. If you're saying that you're not going to increase 004 by adding this discharge, then you'd have to know then what's your current discharge in that event?
Correct. And that is monitored, they have flow monitoring on it.
You'd have to have that number, that's the only way you'd know, yeah.
Right.
So, Scott, to your point, I think what you're saying is, let's say that the hundred-year storm creates a million gallons of outflow, that would limit you to 500,000 that day. So are you going to have storage on-site if there's a storm that does, I mean, how are you going to monitor that you're not going to exceed your permit? Or what's the way that that happens?
There's, there's flow monitoring in the system, there's, there's flow meters all throughout the system, at the wells and in the treatment plants where they monitor that rate of flow, and that is recorded in such that, so that it is not exceeded.
So it's in the treatment system, but is that monitoring the actual culverts of the stormwater that are discharging into the creek?
No, that isn't, we're monitoring the effluent from our treatment plant, which is the pumped groundwater.
Okay.
Groundwater and stormwater, two separate.
I know, but you're asking to use the same venue, right, to discharge into the creek?
They'd have to calculate that, they'd have to calculate that.
Scott, you know what I'm trying to get to? I'm trying to understand how, if we have a million gallon, I don't, and again, for a site this size, a million gallons of water hitting these parking lots because of a hundred year storm.
Right.
Maybe it's not even close to that, maybe it's 100,000 in a hundred-year storm, but...
Well, I mean, somewhere those numbers exist because they got it permitted for a million five, so there has to be backup information that justified.
That is correct. Yeah, there was, there's been, there's been studies by DEC to allow these, the six million and the one and a half million.
Right.
To allow those limits so that it's not going to impact this stream. Those studies were done with DEC. There was also, there was, has been a number, there's been a study done on the Gildersleeve Brook by IBM, the latest revision of that is a 2003 version of the report.
Okay.
That looked at the flows in the Gildersleeve Brook. At that time, they were looking at increasing the amount of processed water that went there and generated a series of numbers associated to it. But we are not proposing any increase as part of this project to the.
Increase to the maximum permit, but actual water discharged every day, do you expect there would be an increase but still within the permit levels?
The.
Realistically, I'm, you understand what I'm asking, right? I understand we could be a seven and a half million, right?
We're not increasing, we're not increasing any stormwater runoff.
Any stormwater runoff, but you're using those same systems to discharge your effluent?
The process, the treated groundwater.
Right.
Correct.
So that is an increase to the stormwater efflu, stormwater permitting?
We're not, we're not increasing the amount of treated groundwater that is making it to that ditch. We're still going to continue pumping, the wells are being pumped today.
Mm-hmm.
Take, back to your point, which I think you're getting to, is if the, if they need additional processed water because they're not, no longer receiving the treated groundwater, they pull more water in off from, say, the Duchess County Pipeline, then there would be a net increase of treated water from the, from the, when you put the two together, there'd be an increase in the stream.
Of, of actual outflows, but you still wouldn't be exceeding the seven and a half million gallons per day that's currently permitted?
Correct.
And that that stream is assessed to be able to handle?
Correct. Today, the plant, today the plant is only operating at approximately 3 million gallons per day.
Okay.
We're well below that limit.
Joe, what's the date of those permits?
The permit for Global Foundries, there's a draft permit that's out there for review right now.
But how far back do those permits go? The one and a half million and the 6 million, how far back do they go?
At least 2003 timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe eight years ago.
Yeah.
It was a period where there was, like, no.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the comment.
The answer was at least eight years ago.
Okay.
But that was the original, or is that another renewal?
Renewal every five years, which takes, you know, sometimes it takes more than five years, so I think for a.
I'm really looking at the inception of those limits. Can we get to a point, you know, how old is the inception of those limits?
Or if the last renewal increased or decreased or whatever, what's the historical?
Right.
What are the historical permits given as your maximums?
We can get that answer.
Okay.
I guess if I could ask another question. Has anybody looked at the capacity of the existing storm sewer system to evaluate whether they can handle the additional flow that they are not receiving now?
Yes, the, the capacity of existing storm sewers at the plant were, are, were reviewed and can handle the flows.
From the new system.
From the new system. In fact, I haven't gotten to the detail yet, but one over here, this pumping well 25, there's actually flow monitoring in the storm sewer system to track that, that's being proposed as part of this. If I could?
Mm-hmm.
Can I go back?
Sure.
And give a general overview, because we dove into a lot of detail, actually, without maybe understanding the whole picture.
Okay.
The site plan application that's in front of you from IBM has been mentioned is for something we're calling a groundwater remediation system separation. We're just trying to separate it from the ongoing plant activities. To do that, what we're asking, the planning board is to review the construction of three in the scope of this site, small buildings. And the buildings are shown, you have handouts, and again, next time we'll come with it, present, to put up on here.
That's fine.
For you. But the buildings are shown as the yellow rectangles on the drawing. There's one on the west side of the plant over here, which I'll get into more detail in a second, one in the center of the plant located about here, and one down here by Building 334.
The one by Building 334 looks like it's very close to a lot line. Have you ensured that it's not encroaching on the new lot line?
It is very close to a line, no, you've got great eyes with that, and we'll get to that in a second. I've got the lot line map on my next drawing I'm going, going to get to here. The position of these buildings was all select, selected because it's relative or close to where the existing pumping wells actually are.
Okay.
So, starting over on this west location, again, just to give you your orientation, I'm sure you're familiar, everybody could probably picked it up already, but this is 52 here. This is Lime Kiln Road over here. This is the main entrance to the plant right here, Palin Road here, John J. High School, this location. So that, that's our orientation on the drawing. There's an existing production well, number one, located where I'm pointing to right on the map. And we're proposing putting a treatment building approximately 300 feet away from that, right on the west side of the main entrance drive.
Gets here.
That's currently a lawn area, so we would be constructing that building in a lawn area. The second building is, goes, happens to be also production well number two, in the center part of the plant here. The production well sits right here, and we've looked at all the underground utilities and met with Global Foundries and selected the best place because of all of that maze, as you can imagine, of pipes above it and underground, to pick these locations and have identified that's where the buildings can actually go. This one is going to be in an existing asphalt parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
So we're putting it right in the existing parking lot here. And then the third one, which is located down here, it's referred to as.
I'm sorry, I want, can you please just pause for one second? Michelle, can we make a note if it's going in a parking lot, that the parking calculations are going to have to figure out how many spots are being lost so that we don't mess up any of the cross-access and cross-parking agreements? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, please do that as you go along. And I'm sure that, are there going to be comments from this meeting, or should I, I need to take these notes?
We'll, we'll definitely have minutes, but I, I would just recommend, I want to, it seems like this application and the prior application probably need to stay pretty much in sync so that we don't step on each other's toes here.
Yep. Ah, it's lost, okay. The third building that we're requesting to be part of the site plan application is something related to production well 25, an existing well that's here right now, and if this is the one that's down by Building 334.
Okay.
So those are, those are the three, and again, that's in an asphalt parking area.
Okay.
All right?
Same comment on this one, then to the second one as well, Michelle.
The next, the next drawing, which is in your packet and here on the front of me, shows, again, the whole site. This does have the lot line revisions that were just presented by Global Foundries, the same lot lines on them.
So, and I'm sorry if you already said this, you've got PW's production well, is that correct?
PW stands for production well, yes.
So production well 25 and production well four are both going to go to the proposed treatment plant that also includes, I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing something. Where's production well four going? Or is that not going to be used anymore?
Okay, well, I will, let me answer your question in one second, if I might, please.
Okay.
Just again.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be throwing you off here.
PW1, as you see, located right, as you see, located here.
Mm-hmm.
About, approximately 300 foot west of that is where the groundwater treatment building is proposed.
Okay.
The size of that building is 42 feet wide, 82 feet long, and these buildings would have a height of 30 feet, which is within the zoning restrictions.
I'm sorry, 42 by?
82.
82, okay, thank you.
The PW2 building is located approximately 200 foot, feet west, and the dimensions of that building are 32 feet wide by 62 feet long, and would also have a 30-foot building height.
Okay.
You're getting now to, back to your question about PW4. PW4 is not continually pumped. If production well two were to go down, then production well four would be, get put into service. So four and two go to groundwater treatment building number PW2.
So you maintain piping, and you'll have piping that either goes from four to two, and then from two to the treatment facility?
Correct.
Or directly from four to the treatment facility?
Correct. There'll, there'll be a pipeline from four up to, it's not going to go to the well, but it'll connect to the common piping at the head of the well, and then go over to the production facility.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Is there, and I'm, is there a version of this that actually shows the piping that will go along with these, just so we can get a feel for what's going to be underground, what's going to run through buildings?
We didn't put that level of detail in here, we have all of that.
It's just discussions, so you're, you're fine, but, okay.
Okay. And then production well 25, which is the furthest one to the south, would have its treatment building located just to the north. The dimensions of the PW25 treatment building would be 32 feet by 52 feet, the same 30-foot height. And as the chairwoman pointed out, currently, the Global Foundries lot line revision is going through the middle of this building, and that is one of the things we're in discussions with Global Foundry to work through that detail.
The, the other thing I would point out is that your production well is on Lot 5, but your treatment facility looks like it's on Lot 7.
Correct.
Is that an issue?
There, it should not be an issue, there.
So your expectation is that whatever rights you currently have are going to survive any subdivision or any future owners' uses, et cetera?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So this runs with the deeds?
It runs with the deeds, and it's going to have to be worked in with the subdivision requirements. So again, one of the more reasons these two have to be synchronized, the two projects.
So one, one more note, Michelle, I think we just, when we talk about cross-parking, cross-access, I think one of the other things we need to understand is any changes to the deeds as a result of agreements with IBM. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep, as we're going, it's.
The proposed buildings are concrete masonry unit structures, cement block type construction, with the outside texture of the buildings and color that are going to be selected to match the existing buildings. So here we have a rendering of the PW1 building. You can see the look of the building, it's your basic industrial building, nothing too fancy or elaborate. There's, there's overhead doors to get equipment in and man doors for people to access, some windows to provide lighting in the building, but kind of your generic industrial building. It's, it's meant to be, you know, a utility building, these will not be occupied, they're unmanned operation, there's, you know, controls on everything, on all the equipment that is continually monitored and alarms and those type of things.
So there's a remote control, and then if somebody needs to go, they would just travel?
Correct.
Okay.
So, this is what building one would look like. This, when you're going down 52, this is probably the only, of the three buildings, the only one that you may possibly see. There's trees in this part of the grassed area. So, a good part of this is actually even going to be hidden by trees.
Okay.
The next-
Michelle, I'm sorry, Michelle, do we need, I'm assuming we need ARB approval before this, as part of the public hearing process? So, just, just so you know, I understand these are industrial and that there's not a large expectation here for aesthetics, but you do need to still follow the ARB, Architectural Review Board process?
Certainly, yes. And, and we would like, you know, we're trying to match what's out there right now. We're not trying to present anything that's, that's different.
Joe, just real quick, is there any backwash associated with these filters, or is just replenish the carbon?
The question was, is there backwash associated with these filters? No. You would, I'll answer that question in a minute. Let me bring them up on speed on what you're, what you're getting to. Scott's diving into some of the water treatment questions. What I have in your next handout, or I have in front of me here, is the floor plan, just so you can see. You know, this is the 42-foot wide by 82-foot long building that we talked about. There's a series of tanks that are in this building, large tanks, eight to 10-foot diameter tanks, 15-foot tall. The main treatment process that's being used here to treat the groundwater is something that's called activated carbon, fairly common. You probably might have these on your home water filters. So, the groundwater pumped up goes through a first carbon unit, then goes through a second carbon unit, and then is discharged. It's the same process that's being used in that central plant that we talked about. Also in the building, there's provisions for a couple more tanks. There's something that's called a treated water storage tank, where some of the water from the treatment process is held in. And what that's then used for is when you backwash these tanks, because they'll eventually, the carbon will get some sediment on it, those type of things. And you'll backwash this. So, they'll use this treated water to flush the one tank out. And then the water that gets flushed out of there gets held in what's called a grit tank. So, it's a self-contained, all of that's contained onsite at this location. The effluent from then, that is reprocessed, and they monitor these units. They sample the water before, in the middle, and after the tank to make sure they're functioning, they're removing. And the contaminants we're talking about are something called volatile organic contaminants. And they monitor before, in the middle, and after the tank. And the second tank is really used as a backup so that you never let the volatile organics get past the first tank. As soon as they detect it here, they stop the system and they replenish, take this carbon out and replace it. And then return the, the system to operation.
So, if they're replacing the carbon, why do you need the whole process of cleaning, the cleaning system?
That's part of the way to, to maintain its efficiency. They also just clean it.
Okay.
Yep. In terms of-
And then, Joe, that backwash then is going to continue to be sent to the plant?
No, the, the backwash is held in the grit tank here, and then that's pumped off. It's, the water's decanted off and goes back through the carbon units. And then periodically they'll remove the grit.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
All right.
PW1 is the only building that's going to have a storage area and a desk for the operators to, to have for their, their recording and office facilities. So, there is a small area over on this side of the building for storage and the desk. Because of that, we also have a toilet facility in this one building, so there is a bathroom in this one. The effluent from this bathroom would tie into the existing sanitary sewer line that's right near this building.
So, that effluent is actually, is going to go to the sewage treatment plant?
That would go to there. One bathroom will be going over to the sewage treatment plant, correct. That's good. There'll be a water supply line that comes into the building to provide, you know, eye wash units, the toilet. Yeah, that kind of thing. Not, not much water is going to be used at these.
And, and where will that come from?
That's going, that will be coming from the existing network of underground water mains that are out at the plant.
Okay, so you have the ability to tap into that for your needs for this, as, based on your rights to the property today?
Correct.
Okay.
Before you get too far away from the treatment system, given that it's volatile organics that we're talking about, is there any kind of air stripping that's involved in the process that would need to be addressed?
The question that was asked by this gentleman was, will there be any air stripping associated? And that's just another form of treatment that's sometimes done with volatile organic contaminants. In this case, the answer is no. All, all of the water from production wells one, four, and 25 will certainly have carbon treatment. Production well two, there's still some evaluation that's being done by IBM and the DEC to see if the best method for treating the PW2 water will continue to be carbon, or if there's other methods available. But I don't believe air stripping is one of the options. Is it? It is not an option at this time. However-
What, what's the implication to that? Because I, I don't understand the term, so.
Air stripping, it means it's, it's, volatile means it, it goes into the air, it's gaseous, in a gaseous form when they remove it from the water.
So, do you have to heat it, or do you put it through an aerator, or what's, what's the-
There's different ways of doing it. Usually, you can put it through just granular material, and it kind of trickles down, and that allows it to release from the water and come out of solution.
Okay.
That gaseous volatiles can be hazardous.
Okay.
Correct. And usually then, you, you take the water through the air, you know, break it into small particles through the air. The volatile organics come off, and then you treat that air before you discharge it. We are not using that process. Our process is liquid phase carbon treatment.
Okay. I, I understood, I just didn't understand what, why you were asking, like, what the, what that meant. So, okay, thank you.
I, I would just add, if we end up having air stripping as an option for PW2, we would have what they call vapor phase carbon to treat and remove volatile organics from the airstream. So, there would not be a discharge of these compounds into the air. So, we would treat the air after water's been stripped of these chemicals.
So, I guess if that, if it were the case that a change in the treatment system were necessary, I'd assume that you'd have to come back for a site plan amendment to, to make room for the, that in the building?
But are you sizing these buildings?
That's a good, a good question. If, if we would need to come back to this planning board for a change in the tanks and the pipes inside the building, I, I guess my answer to that would be, I, I'm not sure we would have to. We're here now to put the build, the physical structure up. As far as all the internals and how that's regulated and monitored, there's an extensive review process that IBM's going through with DEC. They're the final regulatory agency that's making that decision, so I don't know if the-
I think my question was more in terms of, is there room in the buildings to handle-
Other additional treatment?
The equipment, if it's necessary?
Yes, there should be. And if I could also follow up on your question about air stripping, because there were some comments that were received already from Morris Associates. And one of them was related to something that's called building 384. And just for the board's benefit and knowledge, the site plan application that we're asking you to review has nothing, we're not asking to do anything in building 384. But just so you understand what's going on, there's another building located right about here called building 384. And there is another very small production well there, like on the order of two to 10 gallons per minute, that does extract groundwater, shallow groundwater, and that is treated in an existing air stripping process that's out there today and operational and monitored by DEC. We're not proposing to change that at all.
Where does the effluent from that currently reside? Is that going into the stormwater, or is that going into the sewage treatment plant?
That effluent goes, there's some, two or three industrial, you know, pretreatment industrial wastewater plants. It goes to one of those, then it goes to the sanitary.
Okay. Okay. And you're not proposing a change to that, so at the present time?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Where, is DEC started the secret process on their application, on their license, or?
No, we're still preparing the application, and they recognize that we've advised them, you know, we got this application.
Right.
We're going to have this, and I think the, as I understood, it'd be, they'd be looking for a common seeker.
Right.
Between the two.
Tom, are you, are you wondering if DEC would actually want to be the lead agent for this? Is that what you're?
I don't, I don't believe so. They usually don't like to be lead agents.
I'm just asking, yeah, I, okay, all right. Before we, before we close tonight, we will make a motion. I think we've got enough information here. Do you agree that we could circulate for lead agency for this as well, or do we still need more information?
Well, I think, I mean, I think one of the thoughts we had, and I, and we'll have to discuss this further with the applicant, was that whether or not the secret process for this gets folded in somehow to the secret process for the subdivision. And, you know, I guess that's, that's something we can discuss.
So, we would circulate it together, or, because there are two-
Well, I mean, Global Foundries has to sign this application, right? The information related to these buildings would have to be a part of the proposed action for the subdivision. So, you'd, you'd list both of those things. You say that, that the secret action would cover the subdivision, and then it would also cover the construction of these three treatment plants.
Why wouldn't the three treatment plants be a separate site plan amendment for the subdivided lots? Because-
It's the same applicant. It's all owned by Global Foundries' property.
Okay.
Right?
I'm asking, it's fine, we're asking the question.
These are two applications affecting the same property. So, I think the argument is, is that, you know, the secret process itself should review everything in one process.
Have you spoken with Global Foundries about doing a consolidated circulation for these?
We have not. I think we're kind of waiting for some guidance, not to turn it around, but, you know, it's a little bit out of-
So, I think what I'm hearing is guidance is that it's probably better if we do that so that the, the full picture of exactly what's happening now, which would be the subdivision and the construction of three additional buildings and a change to the affluent practices would all be understood as one kind of action.
Because I don't-
Would that require the applications actually be consolidated, or can they remain as, I think we can keep them as two separate applications, right?
Well, we keep them separate applications, but the secret review will probably be consolidated as one. Because I mean, I know the statement's been made that there'll be no changes in discharge from the sewer plant or anything else, but in case any of that is, it's related, I think you should all-
I'm still not 100% sure, though, Tom, that I understood, because we seem to be drawing three distinctions. One is the sewage treatment plant discharge, one's the stormwater discharge, and then one's the discharge from-
Well, it's all water discharge from the site.
No, I know, but that's what I'm getting at. I'm still, I'm still not 100% clear that the seven and a half, seven and a half million, how that's going to break out between those three uses. So, I just, I think we're getting there, but I think I just-
That story will reveal itself.
Yeah, and, and I think as this develops, we were, we're available to sit down with yourself and your planning board to help draft those statements so that they're clear to everybody.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm assuming you would give us copies of whatever permitting, so we can understand what you're requesting as well. I mean, that, that's part of, I think, what we'd want to be able to review.
The next slide that I have up here, storyboard in your, in your packet, is just another picture of the next building. This is production well number two, groundwater treatment facility, very similar look. You know, the doorways and the windows are at a different location, but, but very similar type structure. The next, the next picture in your handout is the floor plan, and you'll see in PW2, we're proposing the same basic floor plan.
Is this, is this the right time to talk about the actual inflows and outflows from each of these buildings, or are you going to do that later?
We can do that now?
You know what, my suggestion, just to maybe help, I think if we can agree that we'll circulate for lead agency for both projects, I think then between now and the time that that process happens, perhaps we can work with the applicants to get a long form put together that would hopefully cover most of the questioning tonight, those issues, and-
So, we did schedule a public hearing for Global Foundries on July 5th. Was that too soon?
Well, you can always adjourn a public hearing.
Because the assumption was that Global Foundries has the, has the information they need to be able to circulate now for the subdivision.
I, I think we have enough information to circulate. I think we just have to coordinate the secret process together. And you can certainly open a public hearing on, in July, but I, I don't believe you'd be in a position to close it right then and there. Unless the long form that's put together totally satisfies all your questions and we send it out to the other agencies.
And if I could also add, Joe and I have been communicating via email and trading some information, and I think we still have a little ways to go to that end. So, to get into maybe too many details about discharges until we get to the end of this-
Okay.
Dialogue might be, might be having to do it twice.
I'm just trying to understand, like, are we talking about 10 gallons a day, or are we talking about 10,000 gallons a day? Are we talking about 10 million gallons a day? I mean, I don't know where we are with this. I'm just trying to get a, a general sense. I'm not holding you to specific numbers.
Well, we're getting there.
And I think to your point earlier, Scott, we don't know the 100-year storm numbers yet and things like that, so.
We're, we're getting there, but, you know, as you get more answers, it raises more questions. And I think the comment right now might be a little premature.
Okay.
In terms of, so you have, the PW25 building, the look of that is shown here, very similar to the other ones that you've seen. So, kind of summarizing from a planning and planning board perspective, when it comes to zoning matters, each of these buildings, we're proposing to be comply with your zoning requirements, setback requirements, which I think I learned tonight, are somewhat different under the new special permit requirements. The only one that we probably need to check on is PW25, because that building line does currently run through the middle of the building.
So, that's also a one-time thing, right? Now, once that subdivision happens, each of those lots has to meet normal setbacks going forward, for, for the I-zone, right?
Which is another reason, ideally, once you subdivide, it would be odd for buildings to all of a sudden show up on a parcel that had just- So, I, I think that's also one of the other reasons why this really needs to be coordinated, because it would be helpful to know the locations of the buildings before the subdivision occurs.
One of the questions we asked with the subdivision was, are there any site plan changes being planned right now? So, in the last application, the answer was no, but now looking at this application, it does look like for a few of these lots, the answer's actually yes.
Correct.
This may be a dumb question. Is there a reason why PW2 and PW25 are different sized buildings? It looks like they have the same equipment in them.
Just the way the process engineers arranged all the equipment, and that's the room that they needed. Also, at the PW25 location, we were working, there's a truck loading dock in that area that we did not want to encroach on. So, it pushed that wall in on us over there, so that's why they didn't have as much room to work with in 25.
And it looks like your PW2 has a future expansion. Do all of them have that, or just this one?
Just that one.
And that's because you're not sure whether your current treatments are going to be the right ones?
We're looking at the, the best process for that particular one, yes.
So, I'm going to ask another dumb question. It seems like one, four, and 25 all do the same thing, or you said they're being treated the same way. Why is four rolling to this plant instead of plant 25?
The, the controls, and part of it is, is the groundwater, how you draw the groundwater down. If you look at the proximity of two and four, they're capturing the groundwater in that central part of the plant. So, if one well goes down, the other one comes on.
So, is the expectation that whatever the treatment is, it's required for two would also be required for four? So, if you're changing two, you have to change four as well?
Yes, yes.
You don't expect the same changes for 25 or for one?
No, we do not.
Okay. Again, we're not holding you to that. We understand things change, but just, just to understand the point in time tonight, that that's what we know. Okay.
As I mentioned, in terms of the bulk regulations, the plan is to comply with all of the zoning regulations and not have to go for any variances. I will call one thing to your attention in the application that we made to you. I did notice that the height of the buildings on the architectural drawings are shown as greater than 30 feet. That will be corrected. They will only be 30 feet high. Terms of lighting?
And all three would go to the ARB for review?
Okay. Terms of light?
I would take them at the same time?
Mm-hmm. We're not proposing, the only lighting we're proposing, exterior lighting associated with these buildings would be a light above the man doors for entryway, so there's no real lighting impacts to the property. In terms of parking, the only facility that will have any parking will be the PW1 treatment building, where we'll have two spots set aside there for operators to pull up. But the other PW2 and PW25, there's, they're existing parking areas, and we would, the guys would just have to find an empty space. Not that you can find an empty space out there, so we're not proposing any-
Today, you probably could.
Pardon me?
Today, you probably could. Hopefully, tomorrow would be harder.
Yep. In terms of traffic, these, as I mentioned, are unmanned operation. There'll be an operator that comes out there periodically to check on the operation and to collect samples. So, really no traffic impacts to the plant or to the surrounding roads. In terms of surface water impacts, PW2 and PW25 are in asphalt parking area. So, you, the difference in runoff from a roof versus an asphalt parking area, there's no change there. Over at PW1, we will be building, putting a building up in a grassed area. And there'll be a driveway and the, the parking spot next to the building, which will be asphalt. So, we will be increasing impervious area there. But part of the design will include stormwater controls so that there's a net zero increase in stormwater runoff from, at the PW- the PW-1 site. And we understand that that is an important issue to the town relative to runoff in the Gildersley Brook, so.
Right.
That will be designed that way with no increase in stormwater runoff. We've addressed or talked and confused everybody completely, I think, in terms of the process water flows, but we'll put those together with the planning board to explain those, what we, there exist in groundwater pumping operations and will continue to operate, the systems are out there today and.
I think it's going to be important, and again, to Tom's point, to look at these two applications together, to understand not just what the maximum gallons per day is in the permitting, but also what actuals are today and what the expected actuals would be tomorrow, because I, we've heard from the prior applicant from Global Foundries that they're expecting to continue their existing operations as they currently exist, so if you're taking water away from their process, I'm assuming they're going to need to add water to their process. So we just want to understand what's actually going to happen, what the maximums are, because we know as we develop this site, certainly the maximums are going to, not the maximum, I'm sorry, the, the usage is going to go up, so it's not unexpected that the usage will go up and there's maximum permits, maximums on the permits for a reason, but I think specifically because you're proposing this change right now, I'd like to understand what that's going to look like.
Very good, we'll put that together, yes.
And you've drawn really clear distinctions as you're talking tonight between stormwater outfall and between your outfall, but you're using the same drainage system, so I would like to understand as much in layman's terms as you possibly can, how that works, what it looks like and how you would monitor and make sure we don't exceed whatever the permitted maximum, maximums are. So if you have monitoring at the outflows or whatever that is, just help, help us understand that.
Okay, very good, we'll do that. The last thing I had is there was a, some comments that have been provided from Morris Associates where they've asked for a number of, information on a number of items, we will gather that information and provide that to the planning board.
I was just going to say, I don't, no, not really sure how we amend the declaration of intent to be lead agency to include this project.
I was, I was going to make a separate motion for this application to recommend circulation with the prior application for lead agency and then what I would, what I would say is, what this may mean is we'll open the public hearing for the prior application, I think we would probably set a concurrent public hearing anyway, but we may need, and we would expect to probably need to adjourn regardless, but we may to, need to adjourn if the comment period hasn't expired, if we aren't able to declare lead agency, we wouldn't close our public hearing. So work with the town, put together what's needed and.
Mm-hmm.
So to that end, do I have a motion to circulate for lead agency for the I, sorry, excuse me, for the IBM groundwater remediation application with the request and expectation that this application, because it's also, Global Foundries is also a party to the application to circulate this and the prior subdivision application together with the circulation for lead agency?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And my only comment is we know you're not quite ready yet, but please go ahead and, you know, prepare that, let's, let's get them circulated together. And then, do I have a motion to, and again, Michelle, I think we're okay to go ahead and schedule a concurrent public, we just like to keep kind of, so the public sort of understands everything that's happening at once, do I have a motion to schedule the I, sorry, I keep moving my paperwork around, IBM groundwater remediation application for public hearing on July fifth?
So moved.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, we would expect to potentially adjourn this anyway with questions from the public, but certainly if we haven't reached the end of our comment period, we would need to adjourn.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. We don't have anything else for tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone else, welcome to stay, but I think most of us are going.